Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to this afternoon workshop for the Gainesville City Commission Thursday, May 25, 2023. Let me clear up a couple of things because apparently there's some misunderstanding. As is our normal procedure for workshops, we don't do a general public comment. We will offer public comment on the items because we always do that on substantive items. We don't do that if we're only getting some information and we don't have conversation about it. If we're involved in a conversation, you will be involved in the conversation. But we're not doing general public comment because for a good while, we have not done general public comment on workshops. Okay? All right? And that's been the case for at least as long as I've been here. So that long five-month period, you know. Madam Clerk.
Our first item is the adoption of the agenda.
We have motion to second to adopt the agenda. Any, I see no lights. All in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, we have an agenda. Moving into, before we move into this, the item, the only item, let me say that, we remind everyone that this is a presentation by the manager about some recommendations for the budget. This is, again, a workshop, so we cannot vote on a budget today. We would not vote on a budget today. That's not where we are in the process. As part of the presentation, you will see, once again, the dates that we will start voting on things, but today is not one of those dates. What we are doing is hearing recommendations from staff on this very difficult manufactured budget crisis that we find ourselves in. But make no mistake that it is a budget crisis. It is a problem. We are working through it. We will work through it as a community, but today is not the day that we vote on these things. Today, we hear recommendations from the manager's office, and we discuss those recommendations and give some general feedback to the manager's office as she continues to prepare that budget. So I hope that takes a little pressure off of all of us, all of us, and the understanding that we are going to have a lot of these conversations for the next several weeks, and they're not going to be easy, but that we will get through them as a community. And I have tremendous faith in everyone on this dais and everyone in the community that we will be able to get through this. With that said, Madam Clerk.
Our item for today is 2023-531 FY 2024 General Government Budget with the recommendations that the City Commission hear budget presentations from staff.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission. I would like to emphasize, Mr. Mayor, that these are proposals that have come up through staff and that they are here for discussion today to just receive input from the Commission. We will continue to work through the proposals. So what you see today may not be the final because we are looking to these workshops to actually continue to get input and to refine what it is that we will finally present to the Commission. We have heard several departmental presentations, starting with the Fire Department, and the last time we met, we heard a presentation from Gainesville Police Department along with all of the charters presented. And so today, we will have a different group of departments to include Housing and Community Development, Transportation, Public Works, Park and Recreation. We've had an opportunity to speak one-on-one with each Commissioner, just again, to hear individually where you may have concerns and provide input. That's very important because it is, of course, a budget that you all collectively will finally review and approve. And so, again, I emphasize that we do have proposals. We are using those in an attempt to balance the budget. It is a significant gap. Steve Arvell, Acting Budget Director, will come. He'll start the presentation. He'll do a summary of where we are revenue-wise and expenditure-wise, although you have not heard all of the individual departmental presentations here in this setting, but you've had an opportunity to kind of get a feel from us in the one-on-one on those that you have not heard directly from here. But Steve will give that overview, and then he will provide pretext to each departmental budget proposal. And of course, the more detailed questions will be answered by the directors or staff that are here today. I've provided some additional information for you and some folders up in front of each of you. There's a little folder. Some of the handouts are over here on this table, just in case the public wants to pick them up. But there's a little bit more information in that handout on community-based organizations as it relates to ARPA, Housing and Community Development, GCRNA, as well as the General Fund, those community-based organizations that receive funding or grants from the city because that will be a part of what you will hear today, at least relative to the General Fund from Park, Recreation, Cultural Affairs. And so we thought that it would be good for you to just have all of those organizations, regardless of where they are funded from. So that's in the folder. Also in the folder is more detailed information regarding Youth Services and Park, Recreation and Cultural Affairs. There is also a Service Impact Package in your folders, and that will take each department that you've heard to date, to include those that you will hear from today, tell you what the service impacts are based on the proposal, how many positions filled or impacted, how many positions vacant are impacted, with a total of the position title that affects those filled and those vacant. There is also information in the package that will give some explanation to the millage rate flat at 5.5000, and then if the millage rate is, in fact, moved up a mil, what that would mean for homes assessed at 150,000 up to 400,000 with the homestead exemption applied and without homestead exemption applied. And so you have that information as we need to reference it during the discussions today, hopefully to make the discussions just a little bit more meaningful. And so with that, Mr. Arvell.
Welcome, Mr. Arvell.
Mr. Mayor, member of the Commission, Steve Arvell, Acting Director of the Office of Management and Budget. If you all don't mind, I'd like to allow Ms. Philer to do her history moment.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
I always like to follow a strong performance.
Steve.
Absolutely. Welcome, Ms. Philer.
Well, the strong performance was this city manager. I'm just trying to take that all in. I think it's very thorough what you provided. I will not be here for that discussion, but I hope it goes well. I appreciate the opportunity to always to come and address the Commission because I appreciate the fact that you think this is valuable, the history, as we look at it. And it is valuable because we know the San Kofa Bird, which is a Ganaien bird that they're going to install for Cherokee Hill, Yatnan on the 19th, says, "Go back and fetch it." So no matter where you are, there's a history there, then we need to fetch. It will guide us into our future. We started that already. Thank you, City, for that. Thank you, Commission, Willits, for letting me send you off to do work at the Emancipation Celebration, which was awesome. Mr. Mayor, thank you for walking with us and being there and for everyone who attended. Today, I just want to talk about some significant African-Americans and their contribution to Gainesville and Larcher County. Oftentimes, we hear names over and over and over, but there's some we don't hear, like Mrs. Thelma Jordan, who was the principal of the elementary school when Professor Jones was the principal of the high school. Mrs. Thelma Jordan was a very strong woman. She had the stature that I think was so awesome, but we knew as she walked up and down the hall and took care of what we were doing at the school, and this is back in the 50s, of course, late 40s and 50s, that she was so intent on making sure black children received the education they needed. So by the time, at that time, the elementary school was the lower floor of the two-story building on 10th Avenue, and once she reached the sixth grade, graduation allowed you to go upstairs to the high school. So she governed the lower floor, and Professor Jones, Professor Jones, obviously, was the principal of the upstairs. But the City did recognize Mrs. Stevie McPherson, Fearson, who was my coach, our school coach during the time I was in school. He had a roaring voice, and we held class in the auditorium because we didn't have the pleasure. And he would sit there and roar all over the auditorium, and everybody heard him. But when he got down on the football players because they weren't doing what they did, we got to just laugh at them and all. But he was an outstanding man in that he led us all. He was somebody to look up to. He cared about every one of those children. He cared about all of us and gave his all, and I think that's why the City acknowledges him. But we don't talk about Mr. Neil Butler, who was a gentleman who belonged to my church. Mr. Neil Butler was the first African-American male to get a nursing degree at University of Florida. He got a master's. He also became the mayor of the City of Gainesville at one time. Tremendous contributions through his work. And of course, there were two ladies that lived in my area that were sisters. They provided the church music to all of the churches in the area. Marie Spivey, Carrie Allen, they were along with the Barbara Higgins that we just recognized the other day, they did at Spring Hill. So these people who contributed may never get their names in light, but the legacy they left is worth knowing because how do we move forward without knowing where we were? I am into helping, hopefully, everybody because we don't teach black history just for black folk. We teach it for everybody because no one knows it. So it's not good if I'm teaching and all the faces look like me. They have got to be on the other side, and you know what? The faces that don't look like me have got to tell their story because there are two stories here, and we're never going to get it done until you hear all of them. So I'm into doing that. I appreciate the opportunity that you give me to come and speak, and may you have a great meeting and enjoy all of the day-to-day festivities. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Philer. So good to see you, as always, and I always appreciate the history moment. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to start just a few comments and kind of building on the city manager's kind of overview. We are kind of at a zero-sum gains type of moment as we build this budget. Our charge is to build that budget within the available revenue sources that we have. We have looked at it, at the current millage rate. We have looked at departments, top to bottom, grabbed everything we can, and I'm here to tell you that we will just not be able to produce a budget that provides a level of service that the City deserves at 5.5. So we are hoping that we can get at least some, not direction, but thoughts on developing that budget at a 6.5 millage rate, which will still result in going back to the departmental budgets and looking for an additional $3 million of savings. So it is in that context that we will begin. All right, go on to the next slide, please. All right, today, we are talking about Sustainable Development. These are the General Fund portions of them, Housing and Community Development, Transportation, Public Works, and then Parks, Recs, and Cultural Affairs. Okay. Well, I just talked about that. So just to remind you that we'll be back on the 14th to talk about the Internal and Administrative Support Service Departments. We will also kind of bring you a, kind of like a summary roundup of where we are on the 14th. It is our hope that we will have much better revenue estimates coming out of State Revenue Conference. We'll get the initial tax rolls, and we'll be able to tie down that number so that you will know where we will be at the two different millage rates as we move forward. All right, Sustainable Development. In today's workshop, we are going to talk a lot about what we won't be able to do or how we will be reducing that level of response and service. And in Sustainable Development, they are going to eliminate a staff specialist, which will reduce our ability to respond to residents' requests and services. They will be eliminating the Director of Economic Development. That is a filled position. That did real estate management, economic development, and we will have to find a way on where we are going to shift those services. We are not going to get out of the business of all those things, but it will be done We're eliminating an Assistant Director of Special Project and Initiatives. Again, this will make it a little bit more difficult for us to address special projects or initiatives that come from the dais. It will get done. It will just have to be done differently. It's kind of a recurring theme, I think you'll see. It will eliminate partnership for reimagining Gainesville with the UF and the Community Foundation. They are also eliminating a Planner Four and a Planner Three position. Those are both vacant. Again, this is going to be a slowdown in process. It'll take longer to get things done, land development code, comp plan, all those things. We did transfer the Chief Climate Officer position into Sustainable Development from the city manager's office, and we eliminated the city's contribution to North Florida Regional Planning Council. Now I have to put my glasses on. I am just too vain. Go back one, please. These are the cost centers, Code Enforcement, Response to Code Violations, Works with Neighborhoods to get those violations in compliance, and they present those cases to Special Magistrate. Economic Opportunity and Special Projects, that's the Real Estate Management, Coordination, Design for High-Priority Projects. The Planning Division does all the planning, comp planning, current, all those things, land development code, the whole thing. The Administration is the administration of all of it together, and you will see that as we go through this afternoon where we had the opportunity to combine and consolidate management and administration of programs and services. We have taken that opportunity. The Rental Housing Ordinance, and that has moved out of Sustainable Development in the General Fund into a Special Revenue Fund so we can adequately capture the cost and revenues associated with that service. And then they just have a bunch of programs, Lawn Maintenance, Demolition of Buildings, Historic Preservation Board, Annexation Beautification Board, City Plan Board, and Development Review Board. Those don't show up in an operating. We have those allocations separate so they can't get spent on something other than their intended purpose, but it's a General Fund expenditure. Sustainable Development also has personnel that are funded through other funds. The one that I think everyone is most familiar with is the Building Code Fund. That is where all the inspection programs, and it's similar to what, this is the model we're following on the rental rehabilitation organization, or rental landlord ordinance, fee, I'm sorry. And they have 12 positions in a Special Revenue Fund, and that's where you will see those rental housing personnel. They will be moved there. They will have a total of 82 full-time equivalents, and if you have any specific questions for the Director, Forrest is here.
In summary, if I might add, the Sustainable Department started with a budget of $4.328 million. It has gone down in terms of this proposal to $3,418,024, and the reduction year over the proposed budget is $910,716. The total number of positions filled that are impacted by this budget in terms of elimination are two filled positions, and those vacant are three. So for a total of five positions eliminated, two filled and three vacant, with a total decrement of $910,716.
All right, next slide. This is a summary of the service impacts that I went over at the beginning. This is just bringing back that this will have an impact on the speed and efficiency at which we serve our customers.
Yeah.
Questions?
I don't see any lights for Sustainable Development. Commissioner Chestnut.
My question is on the Economic Development position. Is someone else going to? I think that person's retiring.
Yes, ma'am. That person is retiring in July, and so we would do some cross utilization, if you will, of the new person that came on board for GCRNA.
That's what I wanted to know, if the functions would be transferred or co-located someplace else.
Yes, as Steve mentioned, we're not going to stop doing the task, but it'll just be done differently.
All right. I think we need to keep saying that. Now, with the North Central Florida Planning Regional, Regional Planning Council, how long have we been a member there? Is it 30 years?
As long as I've been here, Commissioner, Mr. Mayor.
Because I can't ask the question. It's been a long time. And I did ask the impact because we are obviously all making the.
And the suggestion that we no longer be a member, what was the value from being a member, and so.
Each person's advisor.
Provide us with the value and how long.
I'll provide some historical perspective. So we've been a member for at least, I believe, the past probably 20 years. I've been with the City for, going on 11 years now, we've been a member of that for most of the time. Now, we did drop our membership for, I believe, two years several years ago, and the Commission decided to re-up the membership. But we did, for budgetary reasons, we did drop our membership to the Regional Planning Council.
Okay. And I don't know if Steve gave the cost there. How much is that?
It's roughly, I think it's a little bit over $50,000. It's tied to population, so that number increases as we grow in population.
All right, so 50,000 a year.
In terms of benefit, obviously, there's a, you know, sort of a benefit, if you will, of coordination because we have other jurisdictions. Latchwood County is also a member. The Regional Planning Council does provide this portion, and I want to be clear that we're not talking about the MTPO function, that that's a separate function. That's not what we're talking about here. For our membership to the Regional Planning Council, they do provide mediation services through like a Chapter 163 mediation, Regional Planning Council. So if in some event we had a land use dispute with the county, the Regional Planning Council offers mediation services in that regard. Our membership provides us the ability to have sort of coordination with the agency on sort of cross-departmental, or sorry, cross-jurisdictional decisions that maybe Latchwood County is making or the city is making. It's more of a coordination, but by and large, the main function of the Regional Planning Council is to assist smaller jurisdictions, smaller cities that may not have a full planning department to be able to handle sort of the basic functions of, that's required under state law.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut. Commissioner Willits.
I believe my answer, my question was answered about the Planning Council. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. So I did want to weigh in just briefly on the idea of economic development. Our new GCRNA director comes to us with an extensive and very successful economic development background from the City of St. Petersburg. So just to fill out any questions that anyone may have, that is a direction for us. I'm also interested in us thinking a little differently about how we do economic development going forward and doing a more active economic development package. But again, that's something to talk about at another time, but we are absolutely not abandoning the concept of economic development. We're just doing it differently. So. All right, I see no for the lights, so let's move ahead to the next set of positions.
Okay, next slide. Housing and Community Development does not have any service impact. It's a relatively small department in the General Fund that is still, you know, it's starting to get up and running. They are, the department as a whole are funded from numerous sources, largely federal and state grants for housing and community development. This is the General Fund portion of it. It's largely people. There is a slight reduction in the contract that they have with Three Rivers Legal Services that helps with landlord tenant issues, so they will still be providing service. It just won't be at the same level that they have with them right now. That's the Three Rivers. It was at 18,515, so the program. As you can see, they have, five and a half positions are funded through community development block grant. There's an upper limit on what can be used for administration of the block grant, and the City fully utilizes that. And the Home Fund has the same limitation, and there's one, the other part of that position is paid, a position is paid from the Home Fund. The change. The change in, in their general fund is largely due to moving the director from the city managers, this is early in the year, it's happened a while ago, now part of the budget process, okay? Moving that, that individual and, and their, the cost of that individual into the, the housing and, and community development program. All right, next slide. There is a position funded in water, a very little bit of a position in water wastewater. As you can see, the ship fund pays for a little bit more than half, and then the GCRRA, there are two positions associated with housing and community development there. All right, so Cory is here. Do you have any specific questions?
And Steve, you didn't mention there are no impacts of positions being eliminated.
No, that is correct.
So is this the last slide on, on that part?
Next slide, I think it just summarizes all, the cost of the personnel in all funds.
Good to have a summary slide up there.
Yes, this is just the general fund, and I want to point out that, that the increase is due to a personnel swap from one general fund area to another. It's not moving it into the general fund.
All right, Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you. For each of, for each of the departments, I think going through the budget, you're showing the salaries but not the operating budget. So where's the operating costs?
All right, so if you'll go, go back to the, the operating costs will come when we do the all funds budgets.
Uh huh.
Yeah, because it's all in the block, there's a separate fund for community development block grant, and there's a separate fund for ship. So, for example, in, in the block, in the ship, they're gonna, they receive about 1.67, okay?
Okay, timeout. For Sustainable Development, you show just the salaries only but no operating. So here we have salaries only but no operating. So at what point do we see the total cost for operating these areas?
Go back, go down to that last slide. I think the general fund, we do show it.
Okay.
We put in the notes the total amount and the amount that they're going for, housing programs, outside agencies, portion of the block grant goes to fund outside agencies, so that it's there. I'm sorry, I should have been a little bit more detailed on the notes, Commissioner.
Excuse me. The difference here is because it is CDBG, home, ship, all the state and federal funds, we, we have been focusing in these presentations on general fund only, and because this one is really a small amount of the total operating general fund, it's not shown here clearly. It shows in like police department and fire department and those departments when we brought them forward. Here, it's not shown as clearly. I, I hear you.
Right, and it's not shown in Sustainable Development.
I hear you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It will be a component of the building fund when we, when we present that, okay?
Okay.
The general fund operating is in here. If you'll move, come down a couple slides. Next one. Where did the housing go? Oh, you're going, you went the wrong way, I'm sorry. I wish I could control the, oh, 10. There. Oh, it didn't break it out. I am so sorry. All right, I'm, we, can we get that to you, Commissioner? Yeah, it was supposed to show personnel operating. The 439 does include the operating, we forgot to break it out. Sorry about that. We'll get that to you.
All right.
They do not have a big operating budget in the general fund.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut. Commissioner Book.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, this is planning like no other. I wish it was an exercise getting to 19 million plus and perhaps even a bigger figure. But since we're probably going department by department, I figured, and we're gonna have different comments related to department, I thought we just talked about what you were mentioning a minute ago, which is process and streamline and basically getting leaner and, and trying to provide efficiencies in the staff that are overlapping as we combine things. Hopefully eliminates some, I would call them middle management type of positions, and then retain the workers that are already in, in, in positions as opposed to the vacancies which we're eliminating, so there's no doubt about that. And, and on the process side, we are gonna have some mechanisms that we can pull, and one of them would be, for example, things as simple as the MyGNV app. We're gonna have to rely on things that allow people to automate some of their processes, whether we have a person there or not, and make sure that that's routed. In this case, we were talking about codes under our first department, and it's gonna have to go there in a different mechanism. So we're gonna really have to be smart about the way that we make sure people are using that information and still be just as efficient. There will be some reductions, and I think at some point, when you reduce budgets, we always like to say you do more with less, and that is almost always true. And then there is a threshold where you do less with less. And I think this, this 19 million plus is gonna be new normal with some less with less. There's no way around it. Specific to, this is not for response, but specific to housing and community development, I think, Madam Manager, we talked on the auditing functions and areas where we have multiple funding streams coming in. This just bears really comment for the fact that we have ways that we fund our staff that come from multiple sources, and we are gonna have to be super sharp about the way that we account in our budget, in our payroll, and our time and attendance for those funding streams so that, say, two and three and four years down, especially for this particular department, we, we don't want to have audit findings that are kind of looking back some of the things that come. And especially as we cut and get leaner, we're gonna want to make sure those processes cannot be cut. The ability to review where the money and match them up to hours and people has got to be very tight, or it's gonna hurt us in the future. That's just, just a comment. I do believe our auditing function, as a separate function, will do that. And I do believe, I know the staff that are in there, this is not particular, this is not targeting the area, this is area that happens to have some real unique monies that come in. It's gonna be an area that we're gonna, we cannot actually slow down process, and we're gonna have to be just as sharp in the way that we account for the people that are doing the job in that area. So that's just a couple of comments, Madam Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Book. I see no more lights, so let's go on to the next item.
All right, I think we are up to transportation now. All right, in transportation, the reduced or eliminated service, start with the elimination of three and a half permanent position and one temporary position. This is one of the areas where we, we love to streamline management, and we eliminated the transport, the transportation director position, and we'll combine that management of the, the transportation and RTS under a single position. It was vacant. We're eliminating a half of program coordinator vacant position, a filled bicycle pedestrian coordinator position, and are combining two positions into one of a supervising engineer. One of those positions will be eliminated, and it's filled. I believe Ms. Curry talked about how we are addressing filled positions, that we are looking to repurpose as many of those with, you know, open positions that we can, we have a process to, to start, looking at those as they come up.
Let me interrupt you just for, for a quick second there, and, and say in more plain language, what we mean when we say repurpose filled positions? If we have to let someone go in this process, want to find another position for them in the city of Gainesville?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, but the process is, is we're calling it a pipeline committee. It is comprised of a, the HR director, a member from the budget office, Yvette Carter from my office, government affairs and community relations. What we're doing is deliberately taking the vacant positions that are not frozen, or that are not slated for elimination in the 24 proposed budget, and matching those individuals who are now just, we are discussing it, no decision is made, so we're, we're careful that we're in that phase where folk have been advised that the positions are under discussion, but no decisions have been made, and I, I keep wanting to stress that. But we are trying to make sure that we have a committee that is looking at the vacancies that are open and looking at the positions with the resumes, communicating with those individuals to see if there is a match that we can make, keeping in mind that if there is a union, you know, involved, and we have to make sure that we're following those guidelines, that we're doing it, but very deliberately trying to make sure that where we can match up a vacancy with someone whose position is actually, a position is filled, that we're doing that before we get to the end of this process.
Thank you for that. It's, it's, we use language that, that we know what it means within the building, but for folks watching at home, I want to make sure that everybody understands, we are making every effort to, if we have to eliminate filled positions, jobs that are currently being done by somebody, that they're not outside the city looking for other jobs, that we find a place for them to be within the city. So I just wanted to do it, to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I tend to do that every once in a while.
It's a hazard to your job, I get it.
Program eliminations are the community bike program and, I'm sorry, and the smart traffic public website. This, it gives CCTV feeds to media outlets on select critical locations. We're gonna streamline and reduce, the micro mobility is moved to transportation and strategic planning, parking abortion, parking garage merge into a new division called parking operations, and reduction in contractual professional service, it's gonna back our ability to respond to public requests, conduct, conduct studies and those type of things. So we will do them, just not as frequently or as quickly as we have been able to in the past. And it will, we're reducing video detection conversion from a two, from a three-year to two-year video detection. This allows pedestrian and bicycle detection, signalize intersections, which can limit vision zero infrastructure.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I might just kind of summarize what Mr. Vavilla said, in this department, it is primarily funded with federal funds. And so there are some program, there is, there, there is programming that gets general fund support. And again, that is what we're focusing on in this presentation, just the general fund support side of the department. And with that said, the reductions that we're looking at equate to approximately $591,491. There are two filled positions impacted, one vacant position impacted. The two filled positions is the, are the bicycle pedestrian coordinator, a traffic signal supervisor, and the director of transportation is a position that is vacant, it was previously held by Melissa McCready. And currently, the director of RTS is Jesus Gomez, I'll just go ahead on and, and make that clear, we're going to cut the director position and just merge the positions as opposed to having an additional director. And then the, I believe that takes care of those. In terms of services, I believe there are four routes that are impacted, two of the routes, two of the routes are a route, a supplemental route on the East Gainesville side and a supplemental route in the Southwest Gainesville area, if I'm not mistaken. And then there are two routes that are associated with the University of Florida. Also impacted are services associated with holiday services and the fare free program. Anything that I've left out, Steve?
Employee pass.
Okay, you can speak to it, I'm trying to.
Yes, and the employee pass program will be eliminated for both city and GRU employees that are paid for out of the general fund. So I do want to address the difference in the 383 and what the city managed it. We pulled out for the slide purpose a non-discretionary program, it was their insurance premium, we consolidated all that from the departments into the non-departmental, because no one could tell me how they allocated insurance premiums to department, so if you can't, if you can't have a reason for applying something on a departmental level, it is easier to count for and see the cost of it in a single line in a non-departmental. Okay? So, so that portion is accounted for and is part of the overall savings, okay, that we've come to today. Next slide, please. This is a slide of what I just read to you, and it, it highlights the, the impacts, so. Next slide. All right, we're done with, these are, these, this is a visual of the routes that are impacted, and Mr. Gomez is here if you have questions about those routes. It's easier to see them than to just hear route three, route 10, so.
All right, we have a, a full bank, nearly full bank of, of lights, so we'll start with Commissioner Reisman.
Very good. I wanted some clarification, they said for the video, that it's gonna go from a three-year to two-year conversion period, what, what do we mean by that?
I think it's backwards. We were at a two-year conversion, and we're gonna do it every three years now, so it slows those out.
What, what is, what does that mean exactly? Like, what, does it mean to convert it every three years versus convert it every two years?
To me, Jesus Gomez, Transportation Department, it means that it's gonna slow down the process, basically one year to process all that. I can't explain it.
Because right now we have certain lights that will, that, I mean, we currently have these on certain areas, and we have plans to expand it, but it's relatively expensive per light, I mean, but then what is the, then conversion? I'm just curious how that fits into what our long-term plans are. I'm very, I really like the idea of having these be more automated and have them move through, particularly as a cyclist that, I have to go up, hit the little big button, go through there, but also as a car driver, it's much more efficient than having the magnets under there that sometimes work, sometimes don't. And I recognize that there are costs associated with that, but I don't really know what conversion every three years means as we're kind of, trying to expanding that out and moving that program.
Replacing equipment that is needed instead of two years, gonna be late to three years by average.
Okay. All right, and then on these routes, why were these particular routes selected for removal? Then there's also a reduction in route 11, I see, but I'll see the, oh, is, is that up there? Well, why, why were these routes selected for elimination?
The performance, basically, the, the one associated with the general funds is the route three. The other two are associated with the university funding that we also be discussing for reduction in services. But mainly, the, the route three is the one that the city pays under general funds. You see all the proposals on that, they're all general funds, you know, like 665,000 on those routes are associated with the general funds, the, the under 1865 is also part of the holiday service.
If I might just intervene, so on route three, for example, there is a headway route in the East Gainesville area, is that correct? This is an additional supplemental route, route three for East Gainesville? So the question is why that route?
Productivity.
Productivity, usage, ridership.
Yeah, less than 10 passes an hour. So it's a less productive route in the, in the east side.
Gotcha. And then, and were the UF routes also unproductive, or is it just a discussion of because it's where it is?
They're productive, but they're not increasing the funding, so we had to cut service.
That, that makes sense. And then, I don't know if this is a typo or if it was, but it says, reduction of service route 11, which I don't see on there, what, is that, that, there's a reduction in the, what's going on with route 11 exactly?
On route 11, we have two buses on that route, so we basically eliminated one.
Okay.
So the frequency will go instead of 30-minute frequency to 60-minute frequency.
Okay, and where is route 11? Where's that?
The route 11 goes from the, the health department to downtown.
Okay. All right, those are all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, if Jesus, Mr. Gomez, can talk about ridership in general with RTS pre-COVID and after COVID, just so that we can kind of understand what's happening with ridership in general.
Yes, well, pre-COVID, we have a productivity over 20 passes an hour. Now we're going down to 15 passes an hour. And some of those routes went even below 10. And that's what you see the, on the proposed cuts because of the productivity. We going back to maybe 60% level of pre-COVID and is increasing, you know, compared to last year. I believe we're 30% increase compared to last year, but no, not close to be on pre-COVID numbers. So anything that we have modified and planned is based. So anything that we have modified and plan is based on, on those latest numbers. But the, the, the two routes, three and eleven, they were part of enhancements of approved by City Commission a few years ago and funded with general funds.
But, but as a whole, the other, the amount of services that it goes to these other, to the other routes has not been reduced beyond what was done, you said, previously during that. I mean, I would say ideally, what, what I see like in San Francisco or places like that, we're not the only public transportation system that's going through these kind of post-COVID issues. And I, when I see a lot of places that are doing this thoughtfully or trying to keep the, like subsidize the level of service, because once you start cutting service, people stop using the public transportation, it becomes sort of a spiral where, you know, and it's hard to pull it back in. I don't think we're in the luxury at this moment of being able to subsidize our public transportation a bit to ensure that service is theirs, that people will come back over time. But I'd say in an ideal world where we weren't going through these budget cuts, that might be something that we should be proposing here. But, I mean, as a whole, it looks like we're keeping up a lot of the service routes. And so that, I, I appreciate all the work you put into this. Thank you, Jesus.
To me, just to, to let you know, we already have two public hearings on the, on these budget cuts. Because we have to provide the full service in August, so we have to go and, and do the worst case scenario. And the comments we're getting is that, well, they don't want to, the fair free program, they don't want to eliminate it. And they don't want the holiday service to be eliminated. That's the main two comments we have received so far.
All right, thank you. We have several more lights up here, so just Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and thank you. I can appreciate the difficulty that we all have kind of participated in and trying to make these cuts. I will say, it's really difficult for me to see the elimination of the fare free program. That's, that's hard. So, and it's hard for a number of reasons. I mean, you're talking about the most vulnerable among us, the most vulnerable populations. And I'm really hoping that there may be some way for us to rethink this. Coming up in the summer, we have some summer job opportunities where youth will be trying to get from point A to point B. And some of them may need to use the buses, and that's going to be something that we're doing ongoing every summer. And once that disappears, how will these young people who we are trying to provide employment opportunities for, keep them free from gun violence, gang violence, get to work, when this may be the only way that they can do that for now? I want us to think long and hard about eliminating this. And a very similar sentiment with regards to those who are over sixty five, trying to get from point A to point B, and the, the bus system is the only way for them to do that. I, I have this question. What is the cost savings associated with eliminating fare free?
Seven hundred and fifteen thousand for the city. It's a program that is also partnered with Alachua County, and so they, they're doing a hundred and fifteen as well. So it's a total of two thirty, if I'm not mistaken, two hundred and thirty thousand.
Two hundred and thirty thousand.
One fifteen for the city, one fifteen for the county.
That's what we would save by eliminating this.
One fifteen.
One fifteen. Thank you. One hundred fifteen thousand is what would be saved. Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah, let's do some real thinking about that. I would greatly appreciate some reconsideration and, and attempt to save the fare free program. Let me see, what else did I have here? Obviously, I'm concerned about any eliminations of bus routes in East Gainesville. How many people, and excuse me, because when I, I've read this, part of me just didn't want to allow it to soak in. But also, I want us to, to really think about re-envisioning this. How many people, when we are talking about eliminating route three? I heard you, I believe, Jesus, say less than ten riders per.
Per hour.
Hour.
Let me tell you how many people. There's less than two thousand people a year.
Less than two thousand a year? Okay. Well, no, and then, then that's, that's valid, you know. Commissioner Chestnut was saying, as compared to what? Yeah, my concern is that I'm always hearing from individuals in my district that they want to see more service. I hear your numbers, Jesus, but I am really concerned about this. And, and I, I will go ahead and conclude my comments by simply saying, when we start talking about eliminating in areas where severe disparities exist, I want us to really, really think about how we can avoid that, to be honest. And you probably have, but I want us to continue to think, because ultimately, eliminating fare free is nothing that I'm interested in doing. And route three, I want people to be able to get to their jobs, to healthcare, et cetera, by utilizing our transportation systems as best they can. And I'll conclude with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan Walker. Mr. Chestnut.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just pick up and follow up from there. When you look at bus ridership, the overall system, don't count the University of Florida. I want you to tell me what the average ridership is per day.
No university related?
No university, no university. I want you to tell me what the average is for city. A year, let's say a year, because what you just gave was two thousand riders a year was the reason for eliminating route three. So when you compared that, I was trying to see, is the average, three thousand, four thousand riders average?
With the standard practice is the passes per hour. This will have, route three have ten passes an hour.
So?
And the standard from, in the industry between regular city with no students, fifteen to twenty passes an hour.
Okay, and that's what we have here?
We have ten passes an hour.
No, 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 no. In Gainesville.
In Gainesville, we have, average last year was sixteen, and, but we're going up to twenty.
All right. My next question is this. With two hundred and fifty one thousand riders under eighteen and a hundred and eighty eight thousand over sixty five, I'd like to say to the manager, I'd really like to see you sharpen your pencil there and find a hundred and fifteen thousand to continue, to continue that service.
We'll do our best.
Thank you. All right, and I believe route three, I'm trying to remember, I believe last year, I believe it was Commissioner Hey Santos, I think had asked for route three and eleven for the special, for us to keep those in as special routes, if I remember. But anyway, if I remember correctly. But thank you. I'll just be happy if you can find a hundred and fifteen thousand to keep the senior citizens and students under eighteen riding for free. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut. Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, a few other questions that I had were almost identical to what's just come up from Commissioner Eastman and the mayor pro tem. So that's, that's fortunate because we've got so many departments to go through. This department is really interesting because it's one where, where tremendous amount of, of the monies that come through come from, from the feds and pass through or through the state. And that's pretty fortunate for us as a commission, because without that and with the reduced ridership, we wouldn't be able to fund it. There'd just be no way. The, the revenue stream would not be there.
Just a couple of granular questions here, Mr. Director. Same thing on the video detection conversion. That sounded to me like really what we're doing is we're just making an extended maintenance program. We're going from a two year to a three year, if I'm understanding that. So that means that your infrastructure could potentially have some long term ramifications. But I'm assuming that the figure that you have here, this two to three, we feel is not, in the long run, completely detrimental, and it will save us some dollars. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Do we have, do we have any figure even associated with that particular line item? I don't know we have that granularity, Madam Manager.
I may have to get back to you.
Okay, I see there's a number of programs here. Would, would like to see the figure. What is it?
Sure.
Extending the maintenance. Secondly, a very similar question related to the smart traffic public website. It's pretty interesting because that's, that's one that, so where is the realization for the city? Is that radio stations and public broadcast use that for safety and, and traffic patterns and things like that. So where it's actually realized is folks that may go on to a web, may look at a particular web camera, but it's actually used to improve traffic flow in the city just from a, a private public partnership that we didn't even recognize. The same question, we can just hold that for another day, is what's the specific figure that might be affiliated with that particular removal of that aspect of the public website, and we can get that a different day unless you happen to know it.
I don't, but if Mr. Gomez has the answer, great. If not, clearly, we will get those two responses back to you. Mr. Gomez?
Yeah, one is thirty thousand, the other is ten thousand.
Specifically, what, could you give reference to?
Cameras is ten thousand, and the video detection is thirty thousand.
All right, so we, in, in increasing essentially a, a maintenance program for our conversion and making sure that those signals work, we save thirty thousand and remove on the website, save ten thousand. Yeah, okay. The last thing is similar to what we just heard on the reduction of services and programs. I do oppose elimination of the fare free program. I, I oppose removal of that particular program, because I actually don't think it's going to realize a cost savings. Plus, we have the, and, and even more important than the, the cost factor is the fact that you've got a hundred thousand plus on vulnerable on our older and our mentors and our seniors. And then you have a hundred thousand plus on our K through twelve, where we're having some issues with their, with the, the school board simply having bus service that's getting them to the schools. So it has a lot of collateral impacts on there. So I, I would like to sharpen the pencil. I'm not sure, Commissioner.
I wish that's all it took, to sharpen the pencil.
But, because that's not going to save the program, but, but I, I do want to save the program, and I actually don't think. What, what was that? Okay, I understand, I understand. But I actually don't think it's a cost savings, because I, I don't think that the figure of a hundred fifteen thousand is really a hundred fifteen thousand back in the city. What it is, is they're getting it for free right now, and if they were to pay, and they were to pay at that level, we'd reach a hundred and fifteen thousand, I think. And I may, I may be a little off from my budget figures, but, but it's not going to be a hundred fifteen thousand of realized dollars. It's going to be something less than that.
Well, again, we did have a conversation about this, if I might intervene, Mr. Mayor. We had a conversation about this, and what I can say is that one hundred and fifteen thousand is an expense from the general fund and a revenue to RTS. That's real. So we're transferring that revenue to RTS. And so that means that for us, it shows up as an expense.
Yeah, I understand. It is, it is kind of an interesting discussion. If that was not the figure, I would still say what, what, what trumps that is the fact that we have the seniors on the one side and, and, and kids on the other side. So I'll talk about that. And just one last comment relates to the UF partnership and paying for their share of, of the riders. When, when's the last time that we were actually in negotiation with them for their percentage of cost share and revenue?
We do that every year.
Every year? So the last time, I mean, was it, was it last month or was it a few months?
Well, yes, three months or yesterday.
All right, well, I was hopeful that, okay, I can't beat that answer. What I was actually hopeful was, was that it had been several months and it was time to go back to UF and gain traction on the fact that they need to be paying.
Mm-hmm.
And if that's a fall twenty twenty three discussion in preparation for even fiscal year twenty twenty five, not even twenty twenty four, we're not going to be in this for one year. We're going to be in for one, two, and three years. We need to really ensure that our, our discussions with their percentage of what they're paying for revenue for the students, and we do want those bus routes to be good, is very proactive. I would say would be, the, I'll stop there and thank you, because I know that we have a lot of departments to go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
In terms of the UF negotiations, the, the last, since twenty fifteen, they haven't raised the transportation fee. That's the main source of funding to RTS. So it's been staying the same. So, and we have increased the rates of service because of the cost of, you know, fuel, salaries and et cetera. But the same level of funding stayed. So that means that we've been reducing service since twenty fifteen on the UF related service. So, and it's the same situation now. We haven't had a higher rate, but they don't have additional funding, so we have to reduce service.
Yeah, I, I understand, Mr. Director, that their allocation is basically not increased as, so we've either had to decrease service or increase our allocation. It's one of the two or both. So that would be, you're right on point then, as far as saying that you're, you, you provide those figures and we have to have a very healthy discussion about what's provided to get those services to where they're at.
Yes, and, and having worked for a university system before, when you're reviewing a budget on a university side, I'm sure that there is probably an increase in student fees to cover transportation. So that increase occurs, but whether we get the share that we need to provide the services, the other side of that coin. And I think that if we looked at the University of Florida's student services fee, that it has increased, you know, over time. It's just whether the, the city is getting its portion to cover the services that we're providing.
Yes, ma'am. I, I don't have a lot of expertise in that area. I just know what the levers are that can kind of, you know, push our, our negotiations, and it's the numbers that are written. So thank you for that explanation, and again, we have, we have plenty to go, so thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So I'm going to weigh in real briefly. I'll get right to you, Commissioner Willits. But I, I want to point out to us that there are probably fewer students writing than there were in twenty fifteen as well. And we need to be very well aware of that before we start blustering too much. Just saying. Commissioner Willits.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to keep on with the UF thing, since we're talking about it. The transportation fee we're talking about at UF is a per credit hour fee that students directly pay.
Yes.
It's not an allocation from UF. I mean, they may allocate it to us, but it is paid by individual students lumped into their tuition as a fee. That transportation fee, my understanding, it, it has not increased. Other fees increase for all kinds of, kinds of things that they pay for. Some of the students, I think, have some say in or vote on or make recommendations from their, their senate. The transportation fee is something that is kind of stays flat, but it is put there by UF for the purpose of funding transportation, however that is funded. And just so we can remind people, at least in this current budget year, what percentage of all revenues for RTS are provided by UF already?
How percent, what percentage or how much?
Yeah, what percentage of all?
It's, on this budget, it's about thirty seven percent. Let me make sure that that's, because we have a lot of grants, we're using a lot of grants this year, but it's usually about fifty percent.
Right, that's what I was thinking. It's closer to fifty, but perhaps this year, because we have a bunch of grants to buy a bunch of.
Exactly.
New buses and new electric, you know, so this year it may look small temporarily as we approve some, some, accepting some new grants. But in general, you start off, I think when we started off the budget year, it was fifty, fifty one percent.
Exactly.
I don't want people to understand that. I have a question about route one nineteen. In your ridership data, you call it family housing. Why do you call it family housing?
That's been named before me.
All right.
That route campus route.
I ask this because I, my understanding is UF has closed or is in the process of closing slowly, no longer renewing leases, but now closing two large complexes that are, that are at the western end of route one nineteen, as you call it, nicknamed it family housing, which was family housing. It no longer is or will be. I think, I think this is the last semester, maybe through the end of summer. For the ones on Maguire and, I forget the other one. The two that are at Thirty Fourth and Paul, there's two. University of Billy South and Maguire, I believe, but I, I could be wrong. There's two of them, two large complexes there. So I, that's, that's a route that is, at least for what it, the, the anchors at the ends are, appear less useful. Route thirty six that goes, it goes from. Route thirty-six that goes, uh, it goes from UF to kind of the front part of Butler Plaza, but not our transfer station in Butler Plaza. There are other routes that go from UF to either Butler Plaza or Southwest Gainesville, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, twelve also goes from UF to Butler Plaza, slightly different route. Um, and those are on the order, I like, I know you do per hour, I look at the easy per month ridership. Some of these routes, I, I understand why you're looking at them, uh, Route thirty-six in October, which is, tends to be one of the bigger months because students are actually going to class, as I like to say, they're still going to class. That Route thirty-six for the month of October, about two thousand riders, as opposed to Route twelve, forty-three thousand riders in a month, obviously more buses to make that happen, higher, uh, shorter headways. So I see where some of this comes in. So I, I, I appreciate that y'all have looked at it by, by both performance, but also where there's overlapping services, where someone might be able to get close, they may have to change their route a little bit, I appreciate that. Um, on this idea, the basic idea of, the, the word subsidizing service got said by, I think, Commissioner Eastman, but I want to differentiate, there's subsidizing riders and then there's subsidizing service levels, right? Can you tell us a little bit, I mean, when we say we're going to eliminate Ra- Route three, that's because we were subsidizing service, but the fare free is subsidizing riders, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Can you just describe the difference between those two ideas?
Also, but you have, uh, different funding sources. The Route three, for example, is all city funds. And we used to, it used to be Route two, but we enhanced that route and we converted to a three. So we have two buses almost in the same area, so you, you're only going to be eliminating a little segment of service on, on, by doing that. It's all city funds. We have a base level of service that been in place for a long time. And what the university funding and Santa Fe funding comes is enhance that service and create new routes. The Route thirty-six, the one nineteen, though, you know, UF funded completely, you know, hundred percent funding from the university.
Okay.
The, the fare free is, uh, because we couldn't use federal funds because they need, they need to have some local participation to cover that revenue, is, uh, you know, that's a, that's a problem. And, and we use, uh, general funds when we did that. But I mean, we, the city commission voted for it at that time, I mean, it's twenty thirteen, I think it was.
Right. Uh, so I, when we talk about the fare free, um, thank you, City Manager, uh, for reminding us that that is real dollars spent, that is money that goes from the general government to RTS to pay everything, um, staff and whatnot. If we get rid of that and all of those riders still ride and pay, um, assuming that is, that is a real money in at that point, that is, that is real, real revenue. I do have a bit of a question about some of the overlap of, it's maybe very small, some of the under eighteen, over sixty-five, um, who are actually just UF employees, young students and those type of things, and some of that accounting, I, is that a pretty small overlap where, I mean, I'm a city employee and I'm a UF employee, it depends which badge I, I waived that day.
Well, we, we have in the fare boxes, we, depends on what, if that person said you are under eighteen, then you hit a different key, so we keep track of that, Roger. If they show a gate one card, they hit another key, so we, you know, you can qualify for two programs, but if you show the, for the gate one card, that's when we're going to be hitting the key for. So, yeah, it was not, I would say the overlap is pretty small, but we don't know exactly.
Okay, I can definitely appreciate that. The, the, the fare free is something is, it is hard to swallow the idea of eliminating it in general. When I campaigned, people asked about it, I said, oh, I think we've got the funds for it, I think we've got the funds for possibly expanding it and just having completely, you know, getting rid of the fare box, um, because it looked a little more like that. Now, we're just in a different world. And so I, I know, I don't know about our particular system, but across the nation, when people ask, when they're asked and surveyed, what they need out of particularly bus transportation, but all kinds of public transportation, what they need, what they want to change, cost and fare is usually not what they actually mention in all these surveys. It is, sometimes it's cleanliness and safety, I would argue, we don't suffer from a cleanliness, I mean, my experience writing about it, not a cleanliness problem, and I, I don't think a safety problem it is. And then it really comes down to is routes going to where people need to go and then the frequency, you know, short headways on those routes, and so, you know, the hundred and fifteen, um, hundred and fifteen thousand for the fare free, as opposed to cutting service on routes, um, particularly if there are routes where we have decent ridership, you know, that's what pick, make even more people just ditch, ditch the bus. I did, I ditched Route thirteen. The moment y'all went from three buses to two buses at peak, it was no longer the ten-minute headway and it seemed like it was creeping to fifteen or twenty, and also because of some traffic changes, suddenly, I ditched the bus because that was the most important. Granted, I wasn't paying for it, so I'm not the average user, um, but lots of students, rather, I'm not a fare-paying user, uh, because UF employee, but students also ditch the bus when it's not convenient. They're going to ditch it, they're going to find other ways. And so it's hard to swallow, but I know that reduction of services, like Commissioner Eastman mentioned, starts to just be a downward spiral. And when you can cut and cut, you, we can spiral our, our way to only, only having a couple of bus routes that serve UF because students are always going to need to get to campus. But it's, it's hard to swallow, but I, I, I don't want to cut services that are, the services that are needed, the, the routes, the frequency, the shorter headways, because that's how we get people back on the bus. You know, and in a perfect world, the service is so great that we get fare-paying people to jump on the bus, people who are not UF students, you know, um, or any of the other people. In this case, city employees and GRU, the, the proposal, they also would be paying, so, get more of them on the bus. So it's, it's hard to, it's hard to swallow. I appreciate the routes that you did look at, though, low, low ridership, um, and possibly some overlap of service, as is, um, I looked at each of the maps. I encourage the other commissioners to look at the monthly data on, on RTS's website, uh, it's by every single route, it separates into kind of the city routes versus the primarily you, truly UF, it's just on UF campus routes by month compared to the past years. It kind of gives you a sense when we say that ridership is sixty percent of the, you know, a post-pandemic high or pre-pandemic high, gives you a sense, they're fine, they're not all that hard to understand, uh, surprisingly, um, except the ones that cut into, which one are UF employees, which ones are non-UF employee or UF health, that gets a little more confusing, uh, but those are for years back, it's not in this year's report, so I encourage y'all to look at it if y'all have some questions about the real, you know, and look at the map, uh, not just those four routes, go look at the maps, they're really interesting and tell you where we move people around the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and, and thank you, Mr. Gomez.
Thank you, Commissioner Willetts, Commissioner Eastman, and then Commissioner Sacco, and then I've got a few things to say.
Yeah, I, uh, it's a, it's a two smallest line items on here, but I kind of wanted to pick at them a bit, the, um, city employee pass and the GRU employee pass, um, but that's essentially just a tran, and, and in one ways, I mean, it, it, that is the allowance for all of our employees to use the bus or other.
Uh, leaving, yeah.
And kind of serves in some ways as a, um, pass-through, I mean, that, that goes to en- enhancing service for, um, for RTS, right? It's, uh, because there's kind of a fixed cost of running the lines, and so by us giving this, uh, this service to them, and this is something we also provide to other businesses, correct?
Yes.
Uh, how, how utilized is our city employee and GRU employee pass?
We also have a key to keep track of that.
Okay.
So I don't have the numbers with me, but.
I, I mean, it, it seems like in, uh, um, this is one, eh, a kind of a subsidy for, um, RTS, which is important, I mean, not a subsidy, we pay for our bus system, right? But in some ways, it's a payment for our bus system that also provides a value to our employees that costs RTS nothing because the marginal cost of providing one more seat on a bus is not, uh, particularly high, and it's, um, I mean, it's a, a cut I see here, but might be something that, I, I like the idea of, um, of businesses within the city of Gainesville, particularly large employers like UF, Santa Fe, City of Gainesville, Latoya County, doing these employee passes that allow their employees to just, uh, as an extra benefit to being an employee of the city or of the county or of Santa Fe, to be able to utilize the public transportation of that city. It might be something to look into because it's a fairly small line item on here, but it would be a fairly, um, it would just be, it would be a cut to the value that we provide to our employees and also, um, just, it's essentially just a pass-through, I mean, this is about fifteen thousand dollars, that would not be going to RTS, which isn't going to make or break anything, but seems like a fairly easy, um, like a, a fit, like just a, you know, something that we gain some benefit from while also supporting RTS and making sure that their services go through. What is the, um, oh, did you have something to say? What is the annexation of Twentieth Avenue, that hundred thousand line item there?
That's, um, general funds we have received on, since the annexation of Twentieth Avenue for services on Route twenty.
Okay, oh, yeah.
So we'll be reducing that level of service on, on the Route twenty.
And we provide routes in the county as well, is that?
Yes.
We had discussions with them about, um, how much they're paying for those routes or is there, um, like, uh, how, how does that look in terms of our relationship with that?
And they, they are going to be discussing that on the budget, on their budget meetings, and they agreed to pay more.
Okay, oh, great. Well, we would, we, we would encourage the county to put this on, that would be great.
Including one new route.
Oh, okay.
The one, serves on a new route, but that's needs, uh, county commission approval.
All right, all right, that's it, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, Commissioner Eastman, Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Gomez, I think you, you, you alluded to it earlier when you said you were talking to UF yesterday, um, because we, we check on our bus routes. Yearly, um, we are coming, I want to say like towards the summer is when we look at the routes and just, and this commission affirms the bus routes, correct?
Yeah, we were used to say it during the summer.
Okay, and when we look at that, it would just be a request at this rate, um, seeing some of the routes that we are eliminating, I think last year, we had some interesting graphics that really showed when we did make modifications because we had to rethink the efficiency of some of these routes. When we made those modifications, um, we had maps and graphics that showed us how a lot of those service areas were still being met with new routes and other routes. I think when we come to that discussion again in the summer, that would be really helpful to see, um, even as we make modifications and some eliminations, that those target areas are still being met by one or two or other routes. It might not be, I go this point, this point, this point, it might be, well, there's another point between these two now, but we are still, and I, and I hear Commissioner Willetts, like, if the bus takes a little too long, it does delay people, but that, for those who do need the service and have truly no other opportunity, we are still, I know your, your team does it, still tries to make sure that those stops.
To cover the area, yeah.
Are already try, we're trying to hit them, we already have the bus stop made out and built, we do try to hit them again, um, to make sure that, that they are served by at least one route.
Yes.
That would just be a request, um, for, for us and the public.
We talked about it yesterday, um, when we were having meetings internally, to have that information available the next time around.
Perfect, thank you both.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacco. So I'll try to be as brief as possible because we have a lot more left to do. It's hard to be brief about RTS because it is one of the more complex things that we do, it is, the, the funding alone, um, is one of those things that, that involves, uh, the federal government, uh, county government, us, uh, it's Santa Fe College, University of Florida, and, and just a variety of, of funding impacts that, that many of our other services don't have. We are one of, I believe, two municipalities in Florida, out of four hundred-plus municipalities in Florida that runs a transit system, the other being Tallahassee. And for obvious reasons, we are the two that are outliers, they're, and it's not just the university thing, it's that we are isolated geographically from other larger cities. So we, unlike all those cities, uh, in the, the metroplexes around the state, we can't share with, with other municipalities in, in this regard. We are in the, the position where as a not-large city, we are running this very complex operation. So that's an important thing for, for us to, to think about and consider. We are not, by the way, expected to be the, the experts on RTS. We have folks who absolutely are, and we should lean on, on their expertise, as is the case with most of us. Some of us bring specific expertise to the dais, but we have folks who are very, very good at all the things that we do in all these different departments, and I want us to make sure we, we lean on their recommendations. You are not going to find anybody on this dais more attached to a program than I am to, to, to the fare free program. I started, well, it goes back probably twenty years, but I started pushing for this in, in twenty eighteen. We finally got it done in fiscal twenty-one, I think. And I'm real proud of it, real proud of it. I, I have to tell you that it's one of those things where very few people, I, I know very few people, Commissioner Willetts, are, will say that the cost is a barrier. It's for a family trying to put their kid on the bus to go somewhere, it is, it is less about the cost than it is the understanding of how that's going to work. For a senior who has not made a lifetime practice of riding the bus, i- it's less about the cost than it is about being embarrassed to learn how to ride the bus. So taking the fare box away from, from the equation makes it more likely they're going to ride the bus. That's been my experience with this, less about the money, although for some folks, it absolutely is about the money, but for a lot of folks, it's about the experience of doing it, and, and that, you, you take away one level of uncertainty about how this thing's going to work if they don't have to worry about how to pay for it. Between fare free and, uh, the city worker passes, and when I say city worker, I mean all city workers, including GRU, um, by my count, that's a hundred and thirty-one, five hundred and fifty-three dollars. I know that when we say, don't do this, we got to find that money somewhere else, I'm very well aware of that, but I do want management to hear and you all to hear, um, how gratified I am at the support for this program because it wasn't always like this. And I'm, I'm pleased that, that this commission cares about this program, and I am hopeful that through some kind of budget magic, we're able to find a way to save that. But I completely understand, Madam Manager, and, and all of our, our, our staff, I get it, I know why it's here. I, if we have to do it, we have to do it, but I'm really, really hopeful that we can find a way to save that hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars. A lot more I could talk about, about this, but I'm going to ask you, please, uh, go ahead and, and move on, we don't have any further light, so let's try to move through it. Thank you. Thank you all for your comments on that one, I, that means a lot to me.
Making notes, and, and that, that is the purpose of these, to get feedback from the elected officials so, so we know if we're on the right path, so thank you for that. I appreciate it. So, now that I've learned how to use this. All right, Public Works. Do you, Ms. City Manager, do you want to start with your kind of oversight? All right, okay. I'm going to kind of work off a couple of sheets here if you all don't mind. Because I do think position impact is important, and you lose them when they're just in, in, in bullet points, so I, I want to.
Perusing his notes, the Public Works Department has several funds, um, that it utilizes to support operations. Today, we're going to focus on the general fund portion of Public Works, um, and, and what has been impacted as we have, um, reviewed the operations of Public Works. Steve, you may want to kick off with the positions that have been impacted.
As part of their, uh, budget submission, they will be eliminating, uh, uh, ten positions, all of them are vacant, uh, four maintenance workers, a staff specialist, a, a traffic signs and marking technician lead, a program coordinator, a vacant, these are all vacant, a custodial worker in the facilities, facilities is part of Public Works, um, a, a maintenance mechanic and a carpenter position. They will all impact the timeliness of service delivery, all right? I think that's a recurring theme, I don't think I'm going to mention that again, if it's okay with you all, just assume that that is the case. The elimination of a, uh, a. The elimination of a, a right-of-way maintenance crew will reduce the, increase the cycle of right-of-way from two weeks to three weeks. The signs and marking has no regulatory or compliance impact, but it, it does, again, it will reduce our ability to react and, and do things as quickly as we do today. In the urban forestry, forestry, there is, that's where the program coordinator is. And again, this will just be a time constraint. They process permits and they plan, you know, planning requests, those type of things. It'll take longer to do that because there'll be fewer people to take those requests in. Again, with the elimination of a staff specialist, it will slow down our ability to, to coordinate capital projects. Under the facilities, the reduction of a custodial, custodial worker, again, will be a reduction in service internally. The maintenance mechanic has been vacant for a while, but it, it will again, impact, again, these are all impact and timeliness. They also reduced grounds and maintenance by a hundred thousand in contracted services. So, cosmetic changes to offices will, will, will take longer. Now, a department can call up facilities, ask to have some, a wall painted a different color, and they come down. We'll be less able to respond to those type of requests, and departments want to engage their own moving, companies to move furniture. And they reduce their professional services by forty thousand. It'll just, again, this will make responding to those, we know something might happen, we don't know what it will be, and it'll, it'll just remove some, some of those, the flexibility in being able to respond. The carpenter position has been vacant for a while. Again, that's a service level, and they are going to manage their overtime and reduce that. Again, but that will mean things will take a little bit longer. You won't be doing them half-hours. All right, there are three slides worth of, of cost centers for, for Public Works. It's a large department that does a lot of stuff around town. I think some of it's taken for granted, but nonetheless. Engineering services where the cap, where the capital projects generate. That, that, those are the ones, the planning, design, surveying, review, all of the stuff that, that gets us to and from places safely and efficiently. Their performance measures, I'm not gonna go through those. It's there for you all to, to, to look at at your, at your convenience. The GIS systems, services, it's, that's how they update drainage mapping and all that so that it feeds in to the capital project component of it. The administration is, well, that goes with that. That, that's self-explanatory, but it, it is a large component in public support services. A large portion of that budget has to do with streetlights and fire hydrants, right? Inside the city. So, when you see that, that is not personnel. That is largely operation, operating and maintenance cost. Biggest chunk being the streetlights, fire hydrants inside the city limits. All right? And then they have a support services area. The right-of-way maintenance, that is where, where you will see the reduction in right-of-way milling and clearing. They also do the downtown maintenance. That's the cleanup crew that we have a contract over, a contract to do it a third, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and a city crew that does Monday through Thursday. Keeps the downtown, town clean. All right. Maintenance and construction, that's sidewalks, roadway reconstruction, resurfacing, ADA compliance, and emergency activation response. Streetlight special projects, unanticipated special projects. So, they do have a little flexibility. Forty-five thousand dollars isn't a whole lot of flexibility, as you know, for special projects. So, traffic signs and markings, stop signs, yield signs, they, they have a crew that maintains and replaces and adds those to our road, to keep our roadway safe, system safe. The tree crew, it trims and maintains the tree can and peed around the city, so it keeps trees out of streetlights, those type of things. Urban forestry program is tree removal permitting. It manages our urban forest, and it enhances our urban forest. And then they have programs. There's a streetlight program. Is that the, the right-of-way obstruction program, and then crosswalk painting? All right, from other funds, they have a number of positions and, and services that are, and we're showing so that we can tie personnel. Plus, that's why we focused on the personnel portion of it, but they all have operating funds. Stormwater management, search our fund, search our funds maintains their stormwater system and, and enhances it. There are sixty-five, a little over sixty, a little under sixty-six positions there. Solid Waste Enterprise Fund is the trash pickup, and there's twenty-five positions there. Half a position Tree Mitigation Fund. They have general capital projects funds that they fund, that is an engineer, correct? Look over the wrong shoulder. And specifically for capital projects. Roadway resurfacing program is funded through a solid waste transfer, and that is for, to resurface neighborhood roads based on the impact of, of the vehicles. And then they have a little bit in that infrastructure fund, Certex. They have a total of a hundred and two positions in the other funds and a hundred and sixty-three and a half with general fund, all fund total. Facilities management is a component of, of the Public Works Department. The custodial keeps our buildings clean and presentable to the public. The mechanical handles air conditioning, HVAC, systems, boilers, machinery, those type of things. The structural is, is also part, is, is, see notes under mechanical. There you go. So, I just kinda said, they're, they're a component of that, and then we have the administration of that. It has all those things. Is that where utilities is? City, city utilities, the GRU payments for our utilities. So, a large component of that is operating. This shows you where, where the impacts are. As you can see, the administration, three positions to other funds, and they eliminated the staff specialist. And the right-of-way maintenance, that's where the, the, the crew is eliminating. You'll see a longer period of time between, between right-of-way maintenance. We combine cost centers. We're trying to make these slides a little bit less going forward. So, you see things that work together. Let's put them in the same cost center. The traffic signs and markets, the impact on traffic signs and marketing. But you can see, in, in the end, it's about seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Reduction in the general fund portion of Public Works. This is just, again, a summary. The four maintenance workers, the lead, the traffic and marking technical lead, eliminate a program position coordinator and a staff specialist that is filled. So, three vacant and one filled on that slide. The custodial worker's vacant. They also reduce some of their supplies so that cleaning carpets, stuff like that, will, will extend the time between those type of things. Vacant vacant mechanic. Again, grounds and maintenance is reduced by a hundred thousand and, and professional services by, by forty thousand. Carpenter. So, is there any questions related to, I'm sure there are. I'm gonna open up the floor to Mr. Singleton and Mr. Gauthron.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a clarification on the downtown detail, because I know we have the contracted third-party and then the city Public Works group. The one that we are downsizing is which one?
I don't think we're downsizing, sizing any of the downtown detail, the contracted or the internal services.
So, under, if we go to, up a couple, up there, back a couple slides, wrong department. Going forward, I just said.
Oh, I'm going the wrong way.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. I guess I am.
By, by the end of budget season, you'll get the hang of it.
I.
Yeah. So, I think at the bottom where it's, oop.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, at the bottom where we are, the variance at the very bottom line is downtown detail. Is that just a one-time reduction, or?
Ryan.
Whoever will know the answer.
That is an error in our slide. I think, I think we thought it was one-time, so we put it there, but it's not where the contract is. So, there's two hundred thousand dollars related to the contract, correct? And the crew is about the same, a little bit more.
So, we're not touching that detail at all?
That's correct.
Okay, good to know. That, that's, that's an important correction.
That can be confusing.
So, as far as, just from my memory, because my memory is lacking in the last eighteen months, at downtown, Mr. Singleton might know it better, or even Mr. Heimbach, the, the downtown detail goes, what's the parameter? Geographically, how far is that? Downtown is a tenuous word.
I don't think I have my map with me, but it's roughly third, third half down to fourth half, and basically, I wanna say Third Street to Third Street, roughly. Don't quote me on that.
Third to South Fourth, West Third.
Third to Third, roughly.
Thereabouts, okay. Uh, well, I'm glad that was an error and that we are keeping that, because that gets a lot of foot traffic. And I think that was my main one. I have one more. Hold on one second. And as far as the, I guess, all the tree, groundskeeping, right-of-way, all of those that are being reduced, they're not being elimi, eliminated, they're just being reduced to something that is still manageable, still safe, but gives us a little more leeway and doesn't have overtime, operating costs.
Correct. We're not proposing to reduce any services that would impact public safety.
Good answer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacco. Commissioner Willis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Similar question on that one slide. Tree crew. The FTE goes from one point five to six with only a nine thousand dollar. Is that because we're bringing, we're going out of contractors to full-time employees, or?
That's another error in the slide. Some of those FTE counts need to shift down. Your staff has been working very hard to put the, these presentations together, and there's a couple errors there.
Okay, so.
But the, the tree crew FTE count is not changing.
It's not changing. It'll still be one point five?
The tree crew, I believe, is six. The, the one point five is wrong.
So, the one point five number is what's wrong. It is currently six people on the tree crew.
It's currently six, and they'll remain six.
And that tree, I mean, that, that expense is basically mostly just salary, you know, it's just.
There's some operating supplies associated, equipment costs, et cetera.
Okay. But that's, okay, so that is what it is. It's actually six. That's not an increase in FTE.
Correct.
Let's see if that's my last question. Yeah, I think that's my last question. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. I see no further lights, so congratulations, Mr. Singleton.
Park Rex and Cultural Affairs.
We'll zip right through this one, right?
There is.
Gotta keep it light, y'all.
There is a, there is strategic reason to put this one as the last group. They have a number of service impacts within PRCA. They had a significant, they have reduced their operating costs significantly across all programs. Those programs include athletics, cultural operations, gonna be reduced, Artisan Talents V, Depot Park. Where they are gonna go down to one city-produced event and three FTE reductions in Depot Park, the Ambassador. In environmental programs, they have material and spy reductions, a program coordinator reduction. At Forest Park, they're transferring the park operations to Wild Spaces, Public Places during the construction portion of it. It is the elimination of the, of operations at Ironwood, and that eliminates the staff specialist, golf course concession supervisor, and the golf course manager. All are filled. In nature operations, again, there's a lot of, there's a significant reduction in material supplies, rental, equipment rentals that will reduce some of the program enhancements that they offer. They are eliminating some contractual services due and re, due to the restructure of the department. They are eliminating a nature operations manager and staff assistant, both filled. In park operations, again, there's a significant reduction in materials and supplies. Dues, membership publications. They are eliminating a vacant park operations assistant manager, park operations assistant manager. They're reducing some professional services in their admin area, a vacant executive assistant senior, eliminating a program. Coordinator position that's actually in a special revenue fund, it's vacant. Again, in the recreation facility operations, it's largely materials, supplies, and professional service enhancements, and they bring people in to provide services directly to the, to the customer. And they're in, reduce their dues, memberships, and, and publications. In special events, they are eliminating an additional support, funding, the, that is, the, they, they help other organizations with the cost of putting on a special event, that grant program. However, those are being reduced to fifty cents, fifty percent, not fifty cents, excuse me. And we've moved that into a non-departmental line as a step down. And, and you'll see that in other areas too as we go forward. They are reducing material supplies and contractual service and summer camp program. They are also consolidating some of those camps, taking load, attendance ones, and moving them on in to make a higher attendance, and it create, that creates an efficiency. And I understand they will be providing the transportation to them from those centers to, to where, to the destination center. They'll be eliminating some special exhibits at the Thomas Center Galleries. They're reducing materials and supplies enhancements to an administrative overhead in Wild Spaces. They are eliminating the stipend for the management of the center at the Wilhelmina Johnson. However, that is also one of those that will be moving to non-departmental at half of its current, current funding, okay? And funded this year, but just not within their department. And they, they eliminated the youth services component, and they will roll those, those duties into recreation. They hired a, the director, and that, that individual will shepherd those, turning those responsibilities into other parks and into the recreation area. And I believe that you were handed out some of the, the services that they will be providing through that, but I'm gonna stop. Go ahead. Let, if, if, if there are lights on, they wanna go ahead and ask the questions. Ms. Roxy is here. Ms. Gonzalez is here. So.
Okay. First slide is Commissioner Book, and the only one right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Varvel. Yeah, what a, what a multifaceted department that's doing a lot of work across a lot of meaningful programs and programming. So, this is probably the area where we see the program, services, vacancies, and then people, and it, and it's impacting all four. Right, right down that line. So, I, I do wanna say, Madam Manager and, and Parks and Rec Director, this is very challenging, and I saw in that regard, this would be like saying a pat on the back for the difficult stuff that you're putting on here, because it's very, very difficult. And, and splitting hairs on the various programs and services is, um, there's just no good way to do it. The, uh, so just a, a couple of very specific, uh, quick questions on the, on the slide four of four for Parks and Rec. Similar, I think, um, Commissioner Willis and Commissioner Sacco had pointed out some good catches there, and so, um, you know, on some things. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding the, uh, the zeros and zeros where we're talking about visual arts interpretation and Wilhelmina Johnson. We had nothing there, so I'm wondering why it would be on the slide if we.
It was a grant-funded thing. There was never a person, there was never FTEs associated.
No FTEs associated.
But there was, there was, this year, there is a $50,000 program budget.
That's helpful. So programmatic, and, um, so those services are coming from funding.
Oh, I'm sorry. And why is it, you never had a budget there, did you? All right.
Grant funded, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, the Wilhelmina Johnson Center is a, um, the services are provided through an RFP. It is a grant of 50,000 and for the use of the building. And it, along with the other, um, grant-funded, um, agencies through the Parks Department, at 100% in the current year of '23, because of our limited funding situation in '24, all of those organizations are being proposed at 50% of what they are currently budgeted at in fiscal '24. If that clarifies anything.
Yes, ma'am. So that's, that's out of our general revenue.
It is out of the general fund.
Our RFPs locally from the city, not.
From the city's general funds.
Right, right, I understand. That's, that's.
I was looking at the long run. The visual and interpretation, arts and interpretation program, is that the one you were talking about? That is a grant, so it doesn't have a budget till they receive the grant, and then it's, it's budgeted and, and funded at that point. Is that correct? So, so they don't have a dedicated grant source, so it doesn't have a budget for 2024. But when they do, you will see it through budget amendment, okay?
All right, thank you. My, my, my only other question, it relates to line item of Ironwood. It's our only municipal golf course. We had some, um, the, our, our finance committee chair, uh, which is Commissioner Chestnut, and then Commissioner Willis and I serve on that, had some, uh, real good discussion related to, uh, the way that we view this as both a municipal service for some things, but also one of our only revenue generating recreational facilities. So kind of interesting, even though it takes a fiscal loss, it's not the same fiscal loss from, uh, for example, a, a park where somebody can, uh, can participate and use those amenities at no cost. So from that regard, you know, I have some, some real mixed feelings related to that. Again, it's, we have had several, um, golf course closures, and so I think that that opens up opportunity for potentially increase. I think some things we talked about with some. Well, I, I, I want to say that in that finance discussion, we talked about the tremendous marketing that's already done. But clearly, uh, the way that we market and get people there might have some, some impact to our, our users. And then it's one of the, the few places that we, we get fees. So there may be the potential to very, very slightly increase a fee on a, a per-round charge or something like that, and make up the slight deficits that we have there, and still be an amenity that's served. So I'm, I, I don't feel like I'm in, in support of this particular line item, because it's so different from our other recreational facilities, and we need them across all kind of demographics, and I'm not a golfer, you know, so for what it's worth there. But, uh, so, um, that one worries me, so that would be my comment. We, we did have some good discussion, so this just ties into the discussion we had amongst the three of us at the finance committee meeting. So thank you. Um, again, on the Parks and Rec Director side, this is, um, this is a really difficult area, because it impacts a lot of people across, um, all strata. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add too, the Parks Department's budget was adopted at 13.00, almost $14 million. The proposed budget that we're discussing today is $10.6 million, and they have, in the proposals that are being represented, taken a $3.4 million reduction in order to try to get us to a point where we're still trying to balance the budget. And so it, none of the, none of the things that we've discussed today are things that, you know, we would have wanted to put on the table. It's just that we have to start somewhere, and this is a discussion, and it is not as if we can't go back and try to figure out above and beyond what we've done, but as we sharpen the pencil, so to speak, it'll obviously dull in other areas. And so we still have to balance this budget out. And so, um, again, none of this is, is easy to do or even easy to discuss.
Thank you, uh, Madam Manager, thank Commissioner Book, and next up, Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, kind of in contrast to, to, to what Commissioner Book has said, with the understanding of what you said, Commissioner Book, and, and hearing that, um, this is tough, right? But I'm curious as to what it would look like if we sold it. I know, I heard that. Right, right. I'm curious, and it's something that I, I threw out a long time ago. I'm not saying it's something I want to do. I don't want to do any of this. But I'm curious what that would look like in terms of revenue. And, and I think the question, you know, for me is how solvent are we? How, in the reality of things, well, do we do this work? What does it take for us to really be able to do it? Would it be more beneficial to the people in the city if we did turn it over to somebody else? And what would that look like in terms of generating a profit for the city? Okay. Said that. Still curious, okay? Not necessarily what I want to do, but I think it's a question that has to be asked. All right. I do have a question about Aqun Jones and the current full-time position that exists there.
Mayor Commissioners, Leslie Ladendorf, Assistant, I'm short, Assistant Director for Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs.
Thank you. So we currently have one full-time staff person at the museum?
It's vacant right now, but we are posting it, and we are looking for, to rehire that position.
What is the salary? I know, it's okay.
I have to get back to you.
It's all right. You can, you can, you can get it to us a little bit later. I'm curious about that.
Ms. Gretz is looking through pages.
Awesome.
Museum coordinator. 57 is budgeted.
57, okay. 57 is budgeted, okay. Um, I believe at one point, funds for this were coming at the beginning, if I'm not mistaken, out of Wild Spaces Public Places. That position was funded out of that. That's no longer the case, correct?
I believe, I think it was the GCRA. Was it?
No, I think it was Wild Spaces, but let's, let's, I'm curious. Let's do a little research and let me know.
I have the answer to that. Mayor Commissioners, Roxy Gonzalez, Director of Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs. It was originally through the Wild Spaces funding. There was a step-down program at that time where it was 25% for one year out of, where it was 100% out of Wild Spaces, and then it went 25, 75, and then transitioned into general government. So once it, it's already transitioned, and then I believe it was in 2021 when Wild Spaces then took over all operating costs. So it was before that occurred.
Mm-hmm, okay, all right. I'll leave that for now. I probably will come back in the future with some questions with regards to that. I did want to jump back to the Wilhelmina Johnson Center with just a, a point of clarity. So we know that the, uh, original RFP was for $50,000, correct?
I'm, I'm looking at staff.
That's okay. That's okay. $50,000 was the original?
It's $50,000 per year.
Per year.
Of a five-year original contract with additional renewals. So we're getting ready to go out to RFP again, starting, well, it's supposed to start now for September.
It's getting ready to go out again for RFP? Okay. You said in September?
It's supposed to, well, we're supposed to end it in September, so it can start October 1st.
Got you, okay.
The current contract in September.
And now, am I hearing that it's being proposed at 25K?
For one year.
For one year.
For a transition year.
Okay. All right. I'm thinking. And I'm going to continue to think. So this, the current program that is doing this work, I think has been there for about 40 years. And I'm curious about how we can provide support or how we can lean on partners to help us in all of these situations, um, including the Aqun Jones Museum, okay? There are individuals at the Museum Studies Program at the University of Florida that have helped before, when I was there. There are people at Santa Fe. There are individuals who are historians in the community who have wanted to come in and be docents. So there may be some ways that we can help to offset some costs, uh, in both of these areas by pulling in the people, the people power here. I, I would really suggest that we kind of look in that direction. Because we want to continue to provide these services and even space for these longstanding, uh, organizations that have been providing wonderful work and opportunities for folks. Yeah, I do have a question too about youth services funding. So eliminated youth services funding due to restructure of the department?
Yes.
Okay.
So you want background on it?
Leave background on it if you would, please.
So perfect, yeah. So initially, youth services was, um, recommended by the city commission to build and put together Youth Service Division. In doing so, we were budgeted for 700,000, that's including personnel, and there were seven employees attached to that. In the process, through the hiring process and going forward, we were only able to get, because we had to create new job descriptions for each one, so it all had to go through a job audit process. And that takes usually six to nine months before the company can get us the right salary base. So we had to go on a one-by-one employee hire process to make sure that we were funded correctly and still have operating funds to manage the Youth Service Division. So we were able to get the Youth Service Manager, um, who is Cherie Kelly, uh, and in the process of finalizing and fine-tuning the job descriptions for the other ones, commission at that point said that, denied the funding for the employees to get hired in the process, because we just started this whole budget process. So the funding for there, the rest, it was approximately 120,000 that was put aside, uh, for operating costs. That's computers and all that fun stuff. When Youth Service was, um, was designed, or I guess put together, the mission of the Youth Service was to strengthen the youth in our community through programs and services and partnerships with local nonprofits and other youth service agencies. So it's pretty much leveraging and working with the local youth agencies within the city of Gainesville that are currently doing the services to be able to leverage and assist those, in, those agencies, nonprofit or profit, to be able to facilitate and offer services for the, for the youth throughout the city. That was what was originally proposed, and, um, and so we were going that route. And so what we did now is we're restructuring the department and bringing over the Youth Service component and Cherie's skills and expertise over to our Recreation Division and overseeing our, our Recreation Educational Sections, or all the educational sections of our department, to enhance our programs and also leverage utilizing all the other agencies within our city. So an example right now is our summer camps. And having, and seeing the fact that we're consolidating our summer camps, uh, due to lack of participants. Now, we've tried various ways to advertise, various ways to reach out, do outreach and engagement to the community to bring in more, uh, participants into our summer camps at certain locations, certain facilities, and we haven't been successful. Whether, we're not sure if we've lost trust, we're not sure, you know, we're trying to figure out ways to rebuild it and kind of build up these numbers. So what we're doing now, an example, is I meet next week with the Porter's Community, is we got a summer camp, a contracted service summer camp that's going to do Monday through Fridays there. Um, I want the Porter's Community to approve and accept that this camp is going to fit, meet, meet the needs of their community, of their neighborhood, and we're going to offer free services through those camps. Right? So it's going to be free summer camps at the Porter's Community Center this summer, and things like that. But we leverage that through our Youth Service Manager and the outreach that she has. We're also strengthening, um, our, our, our staff and the education that they gain by giving them proper training, uh, in regards to trauma and for, you know, trauma, trauma participants that have been inflicted through trauma in their life, through all sorts of stuff. So we're hosting trauma-informed care training with child advocacy, advocacy centers, um, for all recreation staff. We have open houses with the YMCA, which they sponsor, so we've already started that process, hosting it at the YMCA as well as in our facilities. We partner with a vast variety of different nonprofit organizations. This year alone, what I have asked is we've handed the clerk a nice little summary of what we've done with our mission and our purpose. We have our goals and our, um, anticipated outcomes. So our goals overall for Youth Services is to strengthen and meet the needs of the youth throughout the city by working with nonprofit agencies and organizations to emphasize on the most vulnerable and underserved youth. We use trauma-informed and evidence-based practices to support and engage children. Use family-centered and strength-based approaches to engage, to engagement of youth and their parents and caregivers. So we're extending what we do, not just to the youth, but also to the parents and caregivers. We're strengthening the youth services from the inside out, focusing on internal staff development and continuous quality improvement of the programs, and then using data-driven approaches and outcomes. So with that being, that's where we're currently, right now, with the Youth Services and where we were. We never were able to fully leverage it. Since the Youth Manager has been in place, we've leveraged in fostering relationships with nonprofits. I also want to state that our Youth Service, our Youth Services Manager currently is also one of the co-leads to the One Nation One Project, which is a massive project, and she's doing an excellent job at that.
Okay. Thank you very much for that, Roxy. I will, um, just conclude by saying that, uh, I'm, I'm interested to see how Youth Services is going, is going to continue to be able to do the work. Such a fledgling organization that unfortunately, um, probably won't have the opportunity to really blossom the way that we had hoped right off. But, you know, thank you in advance for the work that you guys will do to, to try to roll it out. Um, it's no secret that I had had a slightly different vision for the organization in, uh, being able to fold some things in about gun violence. I wanted at least two positions out of that, um, that Youth Services Department that would specifically speak to and deal solely with, uh, gun violence prevention. But, um, here we are, and we'll find a way to do that, but thank you, and thank you for that information.
Thank you, Commissioner Duncan Walker. Commissioner Willis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, there's so much. I keep on looking through this and I'm getting, I'm getting lost a little bit. The Ironwood, the Ironwood is where I wanted to start. Thank you, Commissioner Duncan Walker, for continuing the conversation, you know, thinking to some degree outside the box. Ironwood represents, well, on the finance committee, we had a meeting that we had this week. We talked a little bit about it to kind of understand it, you know, and we looked at, you know, some of the individual numbers, but we were looking mostly at, uh, just three months, or, excuse me, six months' worth of, of data, not a whole year. And I, I, I admitted that to some degree, it's a cost, but everything we get out of it, all the services, one way or another, whether people are paying, you know, they're paying for it, uh, what it provides in essence to the city. But we were only looking at a six-month one. We looked at a full 12 months, particularly for years in the past. It's a much larger hole, um, to fill, uh, than hopefully just, you know, just a small increase. An outside operation might be able to increase, you know, fees, uh, golfing fees, and, and keep up, you know, the number of rounds played, but that's probably a bit of a challenge. I, it is somewhere where we can save in upwards of $300,000 a year. Though I don't know that land itself, we might want for something else. I don't even think it's a potential sale, um, where you have a park that you then take, you know, you put on to the. I don't even think it's a potential sale where you have a park that you then take, you know, you put onto the, the tax rolls because you, you no longer have use for the land, probably have use for the land, but it's, it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of the expense there is, it's just maintaining the grounds, right? To a huge degree, golf courses take a lot of...
I think their current maintenance contract runs about six hundred thousand a year.
So I know they do more than cut grass and fertilize and water, but it's a lot. Compared, compared to the, probably the total amount of, of mowing we do elsewhere, it's a lot. And so I, I, I welcome the idea of looking at it and really having, you know, some heartfelt discussions about whether it, whether it makes sense in this environment, outside of this environment, hey, it's great, it costs some, but what it provides us, the number of whatever tournaments and, you know, rounds of golf played and people who get to try out golf, you know, for the first time because it's, it's easy to just go golf a couple times and not be a, a long-term member of a golf club. So I, I welcome the continued conversation about that. The, and there's so much in here to talk about, but I want to just point out one, and that's Depot Park Ambassadors. Is that the same thing as a Recreation Aid?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's what they're called in that park.
Sounds like we have, we've had some vacancies from my understanding, we've struggled with, it's one of the areas we've struggled with vacancies in general, is, is the Depot Park operations. And we have, we have bragged and bragged and bragged about Depot Park being the crown jewel of, of parks, of, of really the whole city. And then to, it's a little hard to swallow the idea that then we're not going to continue to shine up our crown jewel in all the ways that, that the aides do, right? They, they keep the park running, so that's, that's a little hard to look at, knowing how much we value Depot Park. So that's, it's hard to look, it is just, that's what I'll say, it's, it's hard to look at. But throughout here, and I think we're gonna have some longer conversations when we get into other parts of it, like nature operations and whatnot, but there are some cuts to middle management in essence, or combining and moving and finding some efficiencies. It's not, it's not just the park aides, right?
That is correct. I think you have two manag-, middle-management level positions that are, that are part of the restructuring.
Okay. And just, just as a reminder to myself, where are we on? And perhaps this is really looking years in the future. What, what of our positions this coming budget year are being stepped down from support from Wild Spaces Public Places that we are absorbing this year? Are, are there any that we are, that there's a step down from Wild Spaces Public Places in funding of, of, of staff?
So no, so currently, what's been directed through Wild Spaces Public Places is that they absorb all costs for any O and M, including staffing, that gets assigned to that, that stays with Wild Spaces Public Places until there's no funds.
Okay.
So right now, general government is not taking in any of those positions or operating costs.
And that is until what year?
There, there's no, there, yeah, it's current, it's ongoing, it's, it was commissioned, it was voted on the commission to keep all those costs in Wild Spaces Public Places ongoing.
Okay.
As long as the tax exists, yeah.
All right, I'm alw-, I will always be interested to know about, looking forward to the dates and when things, when change. And I appreciate the work that, and the communication from your department about, as we look to Wild Spaces Public Places, you know, budget, the, you know, new and shiny things and new jewels, that funding them long-term is something we always need to continue to look at, whether that is coming from Wild Spaces Public Places, or we have to look for the general fund to transfer. I appreciate that, thank you for always keeping us reminded on that. And thank you for all the work y'all have done, done looking at this. It feels a little unfair right now to see, out of everything we've looked at so far, this is where we're actually, I've started to talk about a real, real large amount of cuts, large amount of employees, and also filled, filled, filled positions that we're, we're talking about, not just vacancies. So I appreciate the work y'all have put into this, it's very, all of this is hard to swallow. I'm sure I'll continue to have feelings and thoughts, Youth Services was one that I had lots of thoughts about, but, but it is, it's a program that wasn't fully fleshed out yet. A lot of vacant, you know, vacant positions, or potentially there, we had plans, rather. But where it is, sits right now, it, it seems like it's on the chopping block because it was not something we had fully developed, and that's sad. I am interested to know, as you, as, as y'all mentioned, what harsh, what parts of the rest of the operation can pick up some of the potential services and programming? Or at least make sure that the general will of, particularly past commissions and or this commission, of, of interest in that continues to trickle down through all, all the department, you know, even though it's not got its own department.
Yeah, I can wholeheartedly state that the restructuring of Youth Services, putting it in, like, to oversee the Rec Division, which is where the bulk of our programming come from, as well as the restructuring with the nature education portion underneath that, allows Youth Services to be spread throughout my department a lot more fluidly. And with the elimination of not being able to hire the positions under Youth Services, this restructure allows the Youth Services to utilize the staffing to be able to offer those programs. It not only, I have strong belief, and I'll stand behind it one hundred percent, believe that it will be, it will enhance our programs, but it will also give us the opportunity to leverage and utilize and assist those nonprofit organizations that have needed it and have wanted to work with the city of Gainesville for years.
I really appreciate, Roxy, I think that's what I was getting at, thank you for helping me kinda, kinda get that out. Thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll have more later, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Wilhelmina Johnson Center, I had to leave the room, so I missed Commissioner Duncan Walker's comments. Is this something that could be funded from Wild Spaces Public Places?
It cannot, it cannot, it's not a project right now under Wild Spaces Public Places. If for some reason we do, it is, you'll see some stuff coming up in June. There is a master plan proposed on that list for Wilhelmina Johnson, so we can figure out how best to take care of that building. If something happens there, we might be able to do some funding, but it wouldn't be through the RFP.
I see. All right, now on Ironwood. I too am not sold that this is a, a program we want to eliminate. Perhaps it's, I think it's beginning to turn the corner, it was. And I, we may want to explore what Commissioner Duncan Walker, Walker was talking in terms of trying to see if someone is interested in purchasing it. I will say that there is another golf course in town that is for sale at this time, so it may not be very easy to do. This facility is used for more than just golf. And what we ask for in the Finance Committee meeting on yesterday was to get a full complement of the programs that it's used for. Community uses it for lots of events, lots of things. And so from lots of tourist events, cultural events are held there, and it is a community resource. So I think if we're going to look at trying to perhaps put it up for sale, of course, it would be better to have it open while you're trying to sell it.
Absolutely.
Than to close it.
Nature is, nature is strong, take a look at Meadowbrook, how long it took for nature to take that one over.
Yep.
Or West End.
West End. Okay, thank you. So I, I am more inclined with Commissioner Book to, and Duncan Walker, to explore this further. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Justin, Commissioner Saka.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Roxy, if I could, just to, just to confirm my understanding, and I think in the simplest terms, as far as Youth Services, because I was there when the idea first came up with Commissioner Ariola and the many iterations and conversations, what we are landing at now in your proposal of the restructuring is kind of a point person within the city for our programs and all the other wonderful programs put on by partners, and we just kind of serve as, as a nexus.
Correct, yes. It's that element with the element of finding where our gaps are. So if we have an empty facility because we had to adjust or remove or do whatever, then we work with these nonprofit organizations that do Youth Services to fill in those facilities and still offer services and enhance services as that.
More as where those gaps are, where can we partner? Because we have space, but not necessarily staff or funding, but we have space.
Yes, space, right.
If that is an example.
Depending on what's, what's out there and how the partnership happens, right? So there's various partnerships, whether they are percentage splits, whether they are, if it's free to the public, then we're gonna look at how we waive fees for the facility, meeting that they meet all the requirements to be there. So you have that as well, but we also look at the gaps of what's needed, right? So if we're looking at preventing gun violence, what's needed, what are we gonna put in that area? What are we gonna put in that facility? So it all varies, depending on the city. Something we've learned through Youth Services is that, we're learning now that each facility has a different need. Each facility has a different neighborhood. So we're working with the housing communities in those areas to find out what they are to offer the right programs through the Youth Services.
That alone sounds like a full-time job. Okay, but thank you. And just because I pulled up the numbers from the Finance Meeting, but I think the operational loss, so we don't make profit off Ironwood, correct? We, we operate out of loss.
That is correct.
I, I think, so it's like a quarter million?
I think it varies from year to year, but it's hovered around, you know, two to three hundred thousand persistently now for at least the last three fiscal years.
That is the final total number, like regardless of what fees we charge, regardless of renting it out, regardless of everything, the final number is negative.
Yes.
Okay, I wanted to clarify that, because there's a lot of numbers.
As are your pools, by the way.
If I might intervene, just so that we, just as, yeah, let me intervene if I might, Mr. Mayor. So yesterday, this was yesterday or the day before, yesterday, Finance Committee meeting, we had a six-month budget to actual, and the deficit revenues expenditure was a little over seventy thousand that we were running under. We were asked by the Finance Committee to come back in the third quarter with obviously an update and with an update of the programs and different entities that use the golf course so that the commission had a better picture of exactly how it is being run and operated and who utilizes it. Ms. Wong is here, I ask her to be prepared, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, to just kind of talk about for the last three years, how Ironwood revenues and expenditures have played out. Ms. Wong, if you do that, just so we can have those numbers on the record. I believe it is from our annual financial report, and it includes the surtax that is also charged with, with those fees, which should not be included, and I think that's some of the confusion with the information that's out there. That surcharge, the revenue from that, is being included in the revenues that we are using for operations. It's not that we're doing that, but depending on who's showing numbers, they're including that as a part of the revenue, and it should not be, it can only be used for the specific purpose that that surcharge was put in place for. So if you don't mind.
Yeah, good afternoon, Mayor and the Commission. Yes, as Ms. Curry said, the surcharge is a five-dollar additional surcharge, so it cannot be included as part of the, the operating revenue. So when we put the information from, for, for the past, the annual comprehensive financial report. I just assume everybody knows by now. So when we put the information from that report from 2020, after the golf course was moved to general fund, so each year is about, yes, Mr. Vavell said, is about three hundred thousand loss. So year-to-date, as of May, I know in, at the Finance Committee, we showed as of March, but as of May, is about a hundred and thirty-five thousand loss.
Fiscal year to date?
Fiscal year, yes.
So October to May?
Correct.
Thank you, ma'am, thank, thank you, Madam Manager. So I think, I'm thinking, Ms. Wong, I think that really lends to the point I'm trying to make because I think on the charts that we have on the, the funding, the, the funding breakdown, by my calculation, it's about one point two million dollars that just doing nothing with Ironwood saves one point two million dollars.
No.
No?
That, that's not, that, that is, it...
Am I misreading?
What we're showing here is the net, if you look at what they have budgeted as revenue for twenty-four, less the expenses, the net impact to the general fund is all you can count as a saving because you're pulling revenues out of the general fund at the same time you're pulling expenditures out. It's the same thing with that rental housing.
So what would the net be then, out of that one point two then? I guess it depends on the revenue that we bring in.
Pardon me?
I, I guess what would be the net then?
It's one sixty-two, seven forty-five, based on what they, we have in the budget for twenty-four.
Could you, I'm trying to see if there's like eighty million numbers, could you tell me which slide number, I'm on thirty...
It's on twenty-eight, slide twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
Yeah. Yeah, we wanted to make sure that, the, the funding, yeah, the fun, the savings that showed in that three point seven related to Ironwood is the revenues last, the expenses less the revenues, so it's a net saving.
So the only saving is one point, is a hundred and sixty thousand?
That's based on the budget, but as you can see, operationally, they sometimes do worse than what's in the budget, so.
Okay.
And I'm not promising that that's the right number and at the end of twenty-four.
But that is a ballpark that we have for now, okay, thank you, Mr. Vavell. So given all that, I am not inclined to keep Ironwood, I never really have been, if only because golf is an environmental travesty, I will go on the record and say that. It takes land that could be better used, that could be better conserved, it wastes water, it puts fertilizer, it is... It's not something that I would associate with a city that wants to put itself out as green and conserve, like environmentally conscious, period. The fact that it could also save us money and we could sell it to someone else who wants to take on that environmental blight, they can have it if they offer a price that is appropriate. And I think that takes away a burden from us, a responsibility from us, a cost from us, depending on what revenue or fees we have that year, all the same, there is a saving. And does, Ironwood as it stands now, because it's owned by us, is not taxable, right?
Correct.
So if it were sold, it could be taxable. I don't know what the tax rate is, I don't know what we zone golf courses as, but it has to be more than zero when it's owned by the city. I'm assuming, it has to be more than zero.
I believe that Ironwood, because it is an enterprise and charges a fee for service, that it, that it is on the tax rules.
It is?
But let us check and get back to you on it.
I would appreciate that answer. But I don't need it right now, but that, that is an assumption that we can clarify when we get that updated information.
I will, I will definitely do that if, Mr. Mayor, if I might, Mr. Vavell, let's just check that before we check that box out, please.
So, so I'm okay exploring the sale option for a multitude of reasons. Even if we look at just that single net savings, I think about two hours ago, we were trying to see where we could find a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to save fare free. So when we talk about, you know, oh, it's not that much, oh, it's this, it's that trade-off that we do. We could keep a golf course that serves very, very few people. Or we could have buses and serve our most in-needs community members. So it's that kind of balancing act that I'm looking at here where the amount of time and money and effort spent on something like this versus making sure people have transit options. And what does that look like in the aggregate over several years? Plus any sale fund that we could have from it or taxes. That, that's how I'm looking at it, I'm fine exploring that option. As far as nature operations, I know we are reducing, what, we're eliminating some of those positions. Could you, can you tell us a little bit more about like what the elimination... Could you, can you tell us a little bit more about like what's the elimination versus the reduction and what that's going to practically mean on the ground?
So the elimination is the elimination of the nature operations division, but that does not affect the services. So the natural resource section of that division, we're looking at restructuring and placing it underneath our park operations, which will increase our resources in being able, as we do fire mitigation, one of the big concerns was that we don't have enough staffing. So utilizing park operations staff under that division, assist in having those resources, plus the machinery, plus, you know, aside from the manpower and machinery, and then kind of combining those budgets to help with that, which allows us for some of the reductions. And being able to do a lot of the maintenance in the nature parks now with more resources. Because there's only five maintenance employees, I believe.
I think.
Under nature for 3,400 acres. And then the education portion of nature operations would go under the education in the rec division, which would be overseen by our youth service manager as well, which allow us to continue our services.
So I think to the mayor's earlier point, it's not so much an elimination as maybe a reappropriation.
Reappropriation, but then you have the nature operations cost center, which is that's where we'll be eliminating and reducing some of those operating costs that we can distribute to the others.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacco, Commissioner Eastman.
Can I just quickly just make the correction, Mr. Mayor? It is, Ironwood is not on the tax rule.
Yeah, so thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Parks, Recreation, Cultural Affairs, echoing what Commissioner Willis said earlier, it feels like we've been going through all of these budget discussions, and some of these have been fairly nice. I mean, we gave a salary increase to police and fire, for instance, as was negotiated within their labor contracts and knowing that we were going to get to this point, and it stings particularly hard as I was looking through, speaking of the annual financial reports, the state of Florida, you can compare apples to apples, all the municipalities, how much they spend on each one of these things. I found cultural affairs in parks is one line item where they found Hocala pays 159 dollars per capita, Tampa 186 dollars per capita, Gainesville's at about 102 dollars. So we spend significantly less per capita than most of the other, than any other large city I've seen, not gone through every city and checked it apples to apples, but the, I mean, we are not, there is not a lot of fat within these budgets here for Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs, and it's, so it's hard to see. I had a couple of questions. Well, so on the cultural affairs, there's a number of great, number of events that I think are incredibly important, you know, that get people downtown, they're more than just bringing the community together, but they create economic development, we have Free Fridays that brings people to downtown during the summer when a lot of those businesses are low. I mean, can you speak to what some of the programmatic cuts are in terms of some of the events and things like that?
Actually, the downtown Plaza events budget was not touched. That is intact, so the Free Fridays, Live and Local, and any other events that happen in the Plaza area will remain.
And just at the same amount?
That's proposed, yeah. The cultural operations budget did get a significant hit in the, what we call contractual services, which is typically our artists and talent fees. That would be made up, always in hopes, with the Florida Division of Arts and Culture grant that we get. It varies from year to year, it's always higher during an election year and can taper off before an election year and go back up. So it all depends on what they appropriate it for, so, but we do look at that, and then we'll be looking at a lot more grants and a sponsorship packet. So we will be, it's in print right now, and we should have it back any day to show you guys, we also will be working on a lot more sponsorships, not just in cultural affairs, but across the board in Parks and Rec.
Could you, I actually have that as a question, what do we mean when we say artist fees, is that, like, what does that entail?
It could include contractual services for, say, Bunt Backline Hire for lighting and sound and that kind of AV equipment, it could also mean the artists, the actual artists that we're paying, could be a muralist fee, it could be a performer, it could be theatrical, it could be whatever those fees are for the artists.
Okay, and, I mean, and that, of course, is a cost, it's the assumption that we will still be able to put on these events even if we're not paying the artists, per se, to go and do them?
We would like to pay the artists, we don't want to ask for free work from their artists, so that we will do everything that we can to get funding to be able to pay artists via grants.
All right. Okay. And Commissioner Sacco kind of asked the question I had on nature operations. I wanted to, on Ironwood, I still feel so, I'm not a golfer myself, just like Commissioner Book said, but this is a recreation that there is very limited access to, or there's relatively limited access to, I think Turkey Creek is the one that's left over here in the county. Oh, in the city, yeah. Is there another, is there another golf course within the? Oh, of course, U.S., but that's not a public golf course.
It can be.
It can be?
You can pay to play.
You can walk on, yeah.
Okay. So, you know, I would like to continue to take a look at it, we do need to cut budgets, and there's not a lot of savings within some of the other departments that kind of need these ongoing things. You know, I would kind of, but I would look at it more as a question of what is our per, how many people are utilizing the service, what is our cost to doing it, because we are taking revenue and there are expenditures in there, but I find with some of these things where we are paying, there's an assumption that it always has to be revenue positive, that we need to be taking a profit on it, and of course, it is a, this is an amenity that we offer, it just so happens people pay it, I think as Steve Barvell was alluding to, same with our pools, we don't expect the pools to be revenue positive even though people pay a small fee to get into them. But, yeah, Sweetwater, we don't expect Sweetwater, Wetlands Park to be a profitable enterprise, but, you know, it helps subsidize those costs. But of course, we're sitting up here saying, well, let's say, you know, oh, 100,000 here, 100,000 there, and if I recall right, we're still 3.5 million at the end of this, even with the full mileage increase, so we are still not to a balanced budget even with these things that we are asking for to come back into there. So it's, I, so I would like to keep looking at Ironwood, I do think that it makes sense, I mean, for someone to pick up and buy a golf course like that would be a labor of love, right? Like, someone would have to take their time, really get to know the business, it is a niche business, and for someone to pick that up before October 1st and say, I'm going to dedicate my life to making sure that this golf course is, you know, profitable and that we're not sinking money into it as a nonprofit or as a for-profit company that picks that up, I think would be, you know, a hard sell. So we might look at it just for the next fiscal year and pick that up, but we have to figure out where we are with the budget, but that's kind of where I sit with Ironwood. And I just wanted to thank staff again for all of your hard work on this. This was, when we talked about budget cuts, I've always thought about you, Roxy, and all the folks at PRCA, because I knew that you guys were going to take a disproportionate hit in all of this. And I think you guys have done it in a way that limits the service cuts and the programs that we are providing, and I just hope that, you know, as someone who represents the community, who's really looking at those programs and services, that's really important, I just, you know, I hope we can still keep up the level of service even with the administrative costs, because I know there's a lot more that goes into all of these than we ever would see, just as people that go and enjoy all the things that Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs does, so, so thank you, guys. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Let me, I've got a couple of things to put out there, and then we'll go back around for the next set of questions. First thing I want to tell everybody is that when we finish this Parks item, we're going to take 10 minutes, stretch our legs a little bit, we have another meeting in here at 6:00. 6:30, okay. I am going to ask that we, we were going to have a presentation about wrapping the clerk's office into the manager's office. But I, to make sure that everybody has a chance to talk and that we work through all these things, if it's all right with you all, let's move that till June 1st. We can do it, but we're going to have to be judicious about how we do this. So if there's no opposition to that idea, I will, just to ask if that'd be added to the 6-1 agenda. Okay, thank you. There is, because this is the biggest piece of what we've talked about, there's a lot to talk about, and I take all of it under consideration as it relates to Ironwood. I do think that we should take a very hard look at how we manage a golf course, and should we manage a golf course as a city, should we farm that out, should we hear creative ideas about what, how else we could operate it, how else it could be operated? I know that there are folks in the community who have ideas about that, and we ought to listen to it, I think. One of the reasons I believe that is because that I heard that loud and clear from the Joint Legislative Audit Committee. So I am not telling you that we should absolutely shut it down, I am saying we need to be hearing ideas, and that we need to make sure that we, that we examine this very carefully as we go through it. Commissioner Duncan Walker said it best earlier, I don't want to be doing any of this. This is not something any of us want to do, but we are in a position where we have to find some budget money, significant budget money. None of this is good, none of this makes the city of Gainesville a better place to live, I don't think. But these are all things that, while painful, we're going to have to pick some of, quite a few of. I consider Ironwood something that we need to keep thinking about, and I'm not telling you that we should absolutely close it today, but I am telling you that we have to have a conversation about that, it cannot be, oh, we want to support having a golf course, so we have to keep doing it. It's a thing that we need to discuss, and our time for having those discussions unfortunately is limited, so we're going to have to make these decisions as we go forward. I want to thank Mr. Barvell's office, our Office of Management and Budget, the manager's office, particularly departments that are especially impacted here, Public Works is taking some big hits. Parks, Recreation, Cultural Affairs has taken the biggest hits. We're not done with any of this by far. Most of the cuts that are recommended, I think, will be necessary and have to be done. There is more push-pull and more work that we'll have to do over the next few weeks to get us into a position where we know exactly what's going to be cut, and I don't expect that we'll have, that some of these things will be unanimous agreements. So that just sets the table for what's going forward, I wanted to thank everyone, I'll move on, we've got three more lights here, but when this set of lights is done, we will take a 10-minute break and hear from the public. Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To your point, I certainly welcome the opportunity to roundtable or to do some community engagement around the usage of Ironwood. I would also like to say, to Commissioner Eastman's point, individuals have reached out about wanting to make the purchase. So there are people that want to have that conversation, just so you know, and perhaps we can make them a part of that conversation, hear what it is their ideas are, their goals are, and make sure whatever our goals are in terms of keeping recreation available or in terms of keeping an environmental standard in place, making sure that the city's priorities are something that they're willing to be in alignment with, but please note that there is an appetite that is wedded by individuals who want to take a look at the purchase of Ironwood. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Duncan Walker, Commissioner Book.
I just say, not as a way as to engage you, break and making sure that we can kind of move on, but while we're in Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs, just two advocacy statements under our reduced or eliminated services, PRCA two of three, it's slide 34, we have, and this is not a financial statement, reduce professional services to eliminate security contract for peaceful Sunday, and the only reason I mention that is there's been some media attention, and there's been some email and electronic communication that is basically indicating that this is a well-supported community project, that the neighborhoods around it support, and that's not accurate. So I think that's just important when we see that, in fact, the neighborhoods and the community members that I've heard that are along Southeast 15th Street, many of our Southeast Gainesville, well entrenched, single-family neighborhoods are, was completely opposed to this event, so I think that while it's not a potentially a financial issue, the feedback that I've heard has been good from the community, so I think that the actions that were taken by the city manager in this case are good related to that. That's not a financial statement, it's a statement that just kind of clarifies some of the feedback I've heard, and if those neighbors in those communities along that area, both in the city and county, were here, they would be saying, thank you, I think, in large part, so that's one statement. And then the Parks and Recreation Director talked about One Nation One Project and some good work that was done, and I think when we talk about good work by anybody, we should just simply name who that is, I don't know who that is, so if you just kind of put that name on the record, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, so the co-leads are Brandy Stone from GFR and Sheree Kelly, Youth Service Manager. Annie Vett Carter.
Important, we're kind of dealing with a lot of backend things and reductions and negatives, so while we have the opportunity to point out the positives, we need to do that, especially when that's the work within the city, by city staff at any level or in any area, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Book, Commissioner Willis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can staff let me know or let us know if, perhaps not the name, but have, are they aware of any interest to buy Ironwood? Is that conversation, email, phone, I don't need to know the name because that's probably a private.
Not, but maybe some of the staff are.
Yeah, unfortunately, no. I've been in the position for a year and a half, and so, and within the year and a half, I haven't heard anything, or I don't know of.
Thank you, Roxy, thank you, Madam Manager. It's always just a little, it can be a little disconcerting to hear someone has an interest in buying a big asset of the city, and we hear about it on the dais, and and it is a, though it used to be an enterprise service, though it currently loses us money, it's a potential moneymaker for somebody, it's a little disconcerting to hear about that and not have some backup information about it, though there are lots of things that, you know, people can say they overhear and this and whatnot, but to staff, the city manager, you know, if you all receive those kind of interests, please let us all know. Similar to, we had an open, was it an open RFP for, not an open, for the old bus depot, RTS, Bista, Bus Depot, someone's interest comes back to us, and we all get to hear a little bit about it, so that it's not, anyways, that is a much better way to learn about, you know, business interest, who are interested in buying parts of our city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Willis, Mr. Duncan Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a point of clarification, I was contacted by an individual about that, and my reference was for that individual to contact the city manager, and so I anticipate that within the week, you'll be hearing from that individual, and I have a feeling that they reached out to me because I'm the D1 Commissioner, matter of fact, I know that's why. So I was easy to approach, they've had an initial conversation, so I'm sure and sure the staff will be hearing from them very soon. Thank you.
Commissioner Duncan Walker, I do want to thank you, Commissioner Book, for pointing out the One Nation One Project leads and everyone who's been involved in that, and I want to say that I had the opportunity yesterday with some, the manager and some other city staff, to appreciate some of the work of the One Nation One Project at a presentation to several groups of high school students of the Never Had a Friend play, which I know, Commissioner Duncan Walker, you had the opportunity to see that as well. I cannot tell you enough good things about that One Nation One Project and how that is being implemented and reaching folks in our community who need to be reached, and I want to thank our staff who have been a part of that because it really is impactful and useful and a great way for us to expend some of those ARPA funds, so, thank you for that. I don't have any more lights here, so what we're going to do is take 10 minutes and come back and hear public comment. Thank you.
I just wanted to, you know, I didn't really feel like there was a lot of information provided in the packet that you got, and I thought maybe I would provide more clarification, and I know that I'm only supposed to have three minutes, but this is my career we're talking about, so I hope you can give me just a little leeway on that. So, we do have 30 nature parks and 3,200 acres that we manage, and the park, our seven-day-a-week operation, so, and we're open from 7:00 in the morning until sunset, 365 days a year. So at any time of the day or even evening, I could get a call. I'm on call all the time, like a doctor, and, and that's okay. I, I am committed to my job, and I, I just kind of felt like, you know, the packet that you received didn't reflect the fact that I do work, because it literally said there would be no impact if I'm, if I'm to be eliminated, and, and so I, I just kind of, you know, hurt a little bit to hear somebody say that. So, I did want to talk a little bit about why, you know, the whole reorganization and eliminating nature oper, uh, nature managers is a bad idea, and I, I also wanted to say that, you know, my team in nature operations, there's a real skill set there. We're highly trained, as, you know, I have a background in biology, my degree is in environmental studies, and I have many, many years in this field, and, and it's a completely different skill set from anybody in recreation or anybody in parks operations, not to take anything away from those people, but the person that manages those folks has to understand what they do. And Ms. Gonzalez said that, you know, the parks operations people were going to go help out with prescribed fire. Well, that's like saying you're going to run into a burning building with a hose. You know, we, uh, wildland fighter, firefighters, and I am one, we get a lot of training, and we wear special equipment, and it's, uh, you have to understand the resource, and it's a real specialized field and not just anybody can do it. So it, it takes also a manager who understands what these folks are doing, and I think that's just been incredibly overlooked. So, under, under this scenario, I think that our nature park lands are going to degrade. I think that, that the nature park staff are going to get told to do more recreational activities in active parks, and I think that the nature parks are going to be neglected, and that's what's not being told to you right now. So, you know, you heard the Parks Needs Assessment recently, and I just wanted to remind you that out of the six amenities that Gainesville neighbors said they were their highest priority, at least four of them are under the purview of the Nature Operations Division, and most specifically are the duties of the nature operations manager. So what will not get done if I am not working the four things that people said they wanted most, these nature trails, canoe kayak launches, and nature center, and I can get into more information about that in just a second. So, trails ranked really high on the list, and back in the early 1990s, the city began to acquire land along the Hocktown Creek for conservation and recreation, and they called that project the Hocktown Creek Greenway. And as nature manager, I've worked on this project since I began working for the city in 2011, and I have increased the city's ownership of conservation land from 2,075 acres to 3,200 acres now, and that's adding 1,125 acres. In fact, right now, I'm working on a key Hocktown Creek Greenway connector acquisition. I'm the only person within the department who has a working knowledge of conservation land acquisition, and, and the Hocktown Creek Greenway as well. And there's funding available to acquire more land and to make these trail connections. And Commissioner Eastman, I know this is a priority of yours, there's, nobody knows about this. If I leave, it won't get done. It is just that simple. And Hocktown Headwaters Nature Center is a place that I think you're all familiar with because you had your retreat there. Another identified high priority for Gainesville's neighbors is nature centers, high on the list, and developing this nature center and the entire park was a labor of love for me. And it takes a great deal of time, effort, and work to develop a nature center, and the exhibits that are in there, I hope you all saw them, and I, I, I worked day and night, weekends, to develop this center and the programs that are in there, and hiring staff, and everything from purchasing the blinds around the, I mean, it sounds silly, but it's a heck of a lot of work, designing the signage that you see there, and...
I, I'm going to ask you to start wrapping up.
Okay, I will try. Okay, I will try. So, what won't get done? A new nature center that people said they wanted. Nature programs and education, that was tops on the list for people out of the high priority program and activities. And, you know, if, when, when the environmental education was under recreation before, those programs pretty much floundered. The schools stopped going to Morningside Nature Center, and when the environmental education came back under Nature Operations in 2016, I turned things around. I rebuilt the programs, I restructured the programs, and we expanded. We went from one programmed and staffed nature park to three. And we quadrupled the number of programs and participants that participated in those programs. And moving environmental education back to the Recreation Division is going to roll back seven years of intense, hard work of developing those programs. And-
I really am going to have to, let this be the last one, please.
This is actually, they asked Gainesville neighbors what they would do if they could only have $100 to allocate. Again, you can see that land acquisition for parks, open space, trails, is Priority Two and Three, and these are two things I focused on during my career. And park and facility improvements, again, you know, who's going to do that? So, I just, I just feel like you didn't really get an accurate representation of what will happen if this position is eliminated and if those people are moved around. And I really think, I hope that you will, you know, get more information and think about it. There's a lot that could be done, that you just approved revision to the tree ordinance, I think, last week. And the tree mitigation funds can be used to offset a lot of the costs of what Nature Operations does legitimately with those funds. That hasn't been taken into consideration. We haven't been asked, you know, grants haven't been taken into consideration. And there's a lot we could do that, that-
But for now, I'm going to have to ask you to stop.
Okay.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you, I appreciate your time, and I hope you will reconsider.
Our next speaker is Chuck Ross, followed by Penny Weber and Brandy Shadow.
Hi, good afternoon, Chuck Ross. I think before we start shaving away at some of the programs that affect nature, this woman that was just up before, who it sounds like they do a fabulous job for the city, some of the transportation programs that were mentioned earlier, that we need to hear the rest of the items that are going to be coming up in the last portion where I believe there's still a significant number of positions that need to be looked at that may have been added over the years. I'd like to thank Commissioner Chestnut for pointing out that I feel like the formatting of the document that was presented is a little confusing and not complete, as far as trying to, I don't think the average person can understand, there's times where you see something, we're not sure if it's salaries, or if it's salaries and operations. So, I think we need to maybe do some reformatting on the budget document. Just in general, I don't see how we avoid having a property tax increase, and I think it's, I'm willing to pay my share of property taxes. I'm sure that other people are also, to make sure the city, the city stays solvent and continues to be able to serve the residents, so we don't have to cut services significantly. Just a general question, maybe you can answer. I'm not sure, I don't understand why the fire assessment fee is only 50% of the cost of operations. Just not asking, looking for an answer now, just throwing it out there. That's not, that wasn't in today's discussion, it was in the assessment, I know. Ironwood, there's a lot of talk about Ironwood. Full disclosure, I am a golfer, though I haven't played recently. One of the things you can do instead of selling it is you can lease it, and there are professional management golf course companies, there are companies out there that professionally manage golf courses, just for FYI. So, bottom line is that, that, there might be people who can manage it, take it off your hands, and you can just collect a rental fee. And then you don't want, I don't think you want to sell it, though, because you want to remain in control of how the property's maintained. What else? Sweetwater. I was just wondering, just out of curiosity, Sweetwater, which reclaims the water from the water plant and passes out in the Paines Prairie, Sweetwater Wetlands, do they get reimbursement or, I'm not looking for an answer now, do they get any support from GRUs, is what I'm trying to say? Let's see if there's anything else. Because they could use a couple more park rangers over there, frankly. And I don't think I had anything else for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Penny Weber, followed by our final speaker, Brandy Shadow.
Welcome, Ms. Weber.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, and Penny Weber, I've spoken to you before, so I'll say 25 years of free volunteering with our nature parks, in addition to working full-time, raising kids, and looking after two sick parents. So, on, I was glad I was in for the discussion today. I was here for the PR, you know, CA review. So, I'm really excited over what the citizens put forth, over wanting the multipurpose trails, the walking trails, something for personal health and exercise. I think that's something that we've been lacking with the first round of wild spaces and public places. I'm looking forward to getting the nature centers so we can make more use of Sweetwater and of Morningside Nature Center. I was surprised with some of the presentation, but I will say, you know, to tag on to Linda's, she did, she is the one that actually acquired 1,100 acres of land. So, for as difficult as it is to get stuff from ACT, from the Water District, all the regulations, to use the trails and to start doing trails in them, I do think you will probably see a bump there, because I quite frankly don't know who else has the expertise. The recreation people are absolutely, totally awesome with your youth services. But ball fields and sports are completely different from the kids being immersed out in nature with green space. And when the ones are going out to the nature parks, and what we're trying to do is to get the third and fourth grades out to the parks more, the entire group of the school, so nobody's left behind, doesn't matter what side of town you're from, if your parents can take you to a sporting event or not. But to go out there to nature parks and get the staff to do about a two, two-and-a-half-hour immersion, from what we're hearing from mental health counselors, if you can get to the kids' third grade, fourth grade, go ahead and get them learning how to cool off, chill down. If we get them earlier, it will make a difference. And I'd really like you to kind of consider, that's the direction a lot of, you know, research is going with this. Also, with the reading level, with the stuff that we're pairing with the schools, the reading levels, we're trying to get them up, and Metcalf and Rollins both were less than 75% reading level with the 2022, and those are the schools that we're targeting. So, in summary with that, I don't really think combining recreation parks and nature parks is a good idea. It was done in 2012, 2013, somewhere in there. For some reason, it went back to the way it was. I've seen a better quality program in the last couple of years than what I've ever seen in my 25 years of volunteering out there. So, I'd like you to look, I'd like you to look elsewhere before you go ahead and totally mesh these in there, because it may mess up a crown jewel that you're developing, but you haven't polished it enough yet. So, anyway, but thank you much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Weber.
Brandy Shadow. And we do have Mr. Donald Shepherd next.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Brandy Shadow. I'm an avid golfer, I visit Ironwood multiple times a week, but I also have a rare outlook on it, because I was a previous employee there for about five years. I want to talk more today about Ironwood, just to add some clarity to what goes on on the daily functions, since a lot of you guys are not golfers. For example, last night, Wednesday night, I did my usual Wednesday night at Ironwood Golf Course, the driving range was actually closed for maintenance, they were mowing it. And with the driving range closed, there wasn't a full bar, Eastside High School had the event room rented out for their high school celebration, and no parking spots were open. And that's with the main service of the golf course being closed. So, it is highly visited, a highly active area. I also want to point out for the golf course, it's on the east side of Gainesville, which I know we're trying to bring businesses and people to the east side of Gainesville. And when you visit Ironwood, you see people from the ages of five to 95, all ethnicities, all genders, it's open to anyone and everyone, and it's highly visited. Another thing I would like to bring up is the programs at the golf course. So, they offer after-school programs, and they pair with Riker House, Girls Place, Louis Richardson's backyard, he kind of rides his own programs and brings juniors out there to enjoy the game. All of this at very minimal cost to the city or the golf course. All the junior sets at the golf course have been donated, they were not purchased. Ironwood also has a summer camp. Usually it's two or three weeks out of the summer, and that is also costs the city very little money, because the staff that's on-site are ready for the daily activities, runs it, as well as volunteers. And the kids, if they're going to bring food or buy food, that all is profitable. But a summer camp there, there's already the place to hold it and activities going on, so it's very reasonable in that perspective. We also just held a tournament for the city of Gainesville, where we raised money for other summer camps throughout the city. So, as far as a place to bring money into the city, it's very much, has great opportunities there as well. And a fun fact, Special Olympics, they pay nothing to golf at Ironwood Golf Course, and they hold their regional tournament there. So, there's all kinds of things going on at the golf course that most people don't know about. A big thing that hasn't been mentioned are our rangers, or our volunteers at the golf course. There's over 60 volunteers at the golf course, any day there's four to 10 of them running around, including summer camps or any other day. A lot of them are retired, and this is the way they're able to afford their extracurricular activity of golf, because they do get a discounted rate by putting in hours and helping maintain and run that course. On an average day, you'll have Jeff Cardozo there, Candace there, a bartender, a cart guy, and that's it. And you'll have anywhere from 80 visitors to 280, so very minimal staffing to have a lot of people running through that course. I also have on here, just a mention about the landscaping and chemicals and environmental friendly. Ironwood is a certified Audubon sanctuary, so everything that goes on out there, they do have to use natural chemicals and fertilizers and things of that sort, so it's actually not too terrible for the environment in consideration. And then, of course, just bringing back, I don't think closing the golf course is the correct answer, potentially leasing it, or offering different programs, opportunities out there, including the room rentals, maybe raising the rates a little bit. Lincoln High School actually has their, the last class of Lincoln High School, currently has their reunion at Ironwood. So, a vast majority of people visit there, and I think you guys should do a deep dive of Ironwood before we consider closing it down.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, our final speaker is Mr. Donald Shepherd.
Welcome, Ms. Shepherd.
My name's Donald Shepherd, People's Representative. There's so much that she said that is needed. Also, what the Nori-Sai Nature Center, how come they haven't had no help? There's grant money, there's been grant money to help them, and they haven't received any help? That's like, I'm sorry, sorry, but it's slapping the face of the lady, and she does work hard to do, keep that up to par for the people. She's like I am, she's a People's Representative, she does that, that comes out of her heart. What we said about the golf, I mean, I can't top that, only thing I can say is, I would like to see in the upcoming year, the front of the golf center parking lot built there, and a gazebo also, that Lauren Poehl mentioned about putting out there when he had the acquisition put together in the agenda and mentioned here. Let's move forward with that. Mrs. Walker had mentioned about the sale of the golf course, you know, worst comes to worst. I would like to see that go to the airport, because I think it was five or seven years ago that was mentioned in the agenda, that they could take and do that, and it would extend the airport down there. There was a whole big survey on the surrounding of it, forest noise and all, and I would like to have them look back into that, because that acquisition there had also about 39th Street, having a corner, 39th Street, having a motel and a gas station, other stuff that had happened there, on that acquisition. Also, I'd like to take a mention that our police force also helped with a program to take and help with the mental health people, and Meridian, you know, if we have the officer up here that is here, she could explain what she explained in our meeting yesterday, and this girl that was at the podium, she did a superb, fabulous job of explaining all the things that are available to our police force. And I was like shocked to find out things that she had brought up that are available to the average person, but people don't know about it. And so, I think that, I'd like to have that group of officers come here and do the same thing here, what they did downstairs in the Leslie Klein Room. I mean, I was so impressed, I can't say anymore. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes our speaker, and if I may apologize, Ms. Demetropoulos for butchering her name earlier.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, so, that closes that public comment. Does anyone have anything else to add? I'm sure we have some more folks up here. No? All right. Mr. Willis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure we, to some degree, answer some questions that come in. This is all, in the end, budget-driven, and, you know, we're going to continue to have these conversations for months, but for people, the public, to know, like, why doesn't the fire assessment cover all of, everything it takes? Because it's a fire assessment, and it's not a rescue assessment. And so, state law prevents us from doing certain things, it's based on protecting property, not protecting lives, so we, the rescue is a big portion of GFR, and so, we have to, we have to find that budget elsewhere. It can't, 100% of our GFR budget obviously cannot come from fire assessment, because a fire assessment is legally limited. And to make sure that people understand that when we talk about the cuts we're looking at, it's not that we are proposing these, where staff has identified potential cuts, because we don't want to raise property tax. These cuts don't even get close to what we need to fill in the hole, at all. I mean, they get us there, they get us down the path, but they don't get us anywhere close. And, and a tax increase is probably the only way we're going to fill in the hole, probably, unless we have some way deeper cuts, even in areas we've already seen staff bring to us, or some dramatic change of heart of J-LAC to say, whoa, your general services contribution formula is, you know, it was way too stingy for the city, you know, here's a couple more million back, or if they would agree to that. But I just want to make sure people know, and we express it, that these are kind of, I mean, it's more than scratching the surface, because we have, staff has identified a lot of areas, but this is not nearly the full path we're going down. This is just the beginning, unfortunately. So, just want to make sure that gets set out there. I thank everyone for coming. to make sure that gets set out there. And I thank everyone for coming and sharing about their passion for different parts of our city and their experiences in it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Willis. Commissioner Eastman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you. I really appreciated what Mr. Demetropolis said about, I mean, well, one, thank you for all of your years of service to the city. I know every time I go by Morningside Nature Center, I always am struck by how great the fire, how great the fire control is there, how great everything looks. And I know when you walk through a natural environment like that, and it feels natural, that's not because, you know, we've just left it that way. It's because the folks, that, that there are people who are working very, very hard to make sure that that environment is in its natural state and is working the way it needs to. And she mentioned something that, that I kind of, I didn't, I thought about mentioning this before, but I'm glad that you did, which is that I hear people saying that, that, you know, this, through this process, maybe we will do more with less. We will find efficiencies, we will continue to provide services. And I think that is a good thing to say to make us perhaps up here feel better, maybe some of the folks within the community feel better. But, I don't think it's, one, accurate, and two, I do think it kind of undermines all of the hard work that all of our, that all of the employees who've spent their lives working to try to be efficient, to try to make the city work better. It, I mean, it, it undervalues the work they do. I think that, you know, you can, we will certainly find efficiencies as we cut. We will certainly find ways to do services better, potentially, but we will be doing them less. I mean, there will be, we will have the people that, like, when, when we have an issue with our roads, it will be slower. Like, we will not be getting to things as quickly. There will be less events that people will be having, which means businesses in downtown, the businesses that are nearby will not be getting the kind of revenue that are received from that. There will be less time for us to come together. There will be less transportation opportunities. And all of these things will be felt sort of marginally, because we're spreading this across there, but it will be less. And, and I don't want the weight of any of this to not be felt, and I do, so, I appreciated you saying that, Ms. Demetropolis. And, so, you know, we're going to do our best to try to mitigate that as much as possible. And I just really appreciate staff for all of the work they put into this, and for anyone who is coming out of the other side with a position that is not, that they felt was really needed within their department but will not be filled, or if positions are cut that are filled out on here. It's not a, it is not because your work was not important. It is not because you were not valued by our community. It is just that the state of Florida has decided that they are going to beat up on Gainesville for a bit, and we are doing our best to live within the reality of where we are. And, you know, and I just hope that the weight of all of this sinks in on people, that all of this was said very clinically and very like, you know, there's this cut, there's this number, but all of this is real people. It is real services that people rely on. It is our environment. It is the thing that makes Gainesville great. And I just hope that we remember that as we go through this process. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Eastman. Mr. Buck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Eastman, for the statements. I think that the thoughts about, you know, streamlined and efficiency, those, in fact, those will occur, but there is a threshold that we will pass in the figures that we have to cut. And so, we will be doing less with less. I'm in 100% agreement, and we know that, and that is a, that's the reality we face. And this is what we're looking at when we put the human face. So, thank you, thank you for your, your service to the city to this point, and, and hope it continues. And it kind of gives us the realism of what the spreadsheets are, when you see someone talking about what the, what the actual accomplishments are, and where we've gone as a city, and how you gain lands, and how you've made it a better place to live. So, I think that's a, that's a, what I will say is, is very difficult to hear you speak and see that, because it really provides context that is really difficult to deal with. Kind of along the lines on the personnel side, Madam Manager and Mr. Mayor is, I do think that something that I hope we'll be exploring, we have several more budget, difficult budget conversations to go. And I, I think that one area that we at least want to explore, and this is going to make a lot of folks probably very nervous, is reduction in salary at our highest, at our highest level. So, from basically what we consider a manager and up, whether it's an empty amount or non-bargaining units employees, right? I'm talking about, what does it look like if all of them take a 15% pay cut, or a 10% pay cut, or a 5%? And that is a terrible conversation to have. But, if I balance a pay cut, you know, at an employee who's doing a very good job at a high level, balance not having other employees at the working level, I'd probably take the pay cut off the employees that are doing okay for us. So, I think that that's something for the, all our charters to explore, is what that looks like for our employees that are not in those bargaining units, and they're not contractually obligated. So, that's the first thing. That's on the, on the people's side and the high wage side. The second piece is just the, the infrastructure. Where we're freezing people and strategic positions, there may be less of a need for some of our mobile infrastructure, and that's things like the fleet. Our fleet is large, and fleet is a high dollar cost to the city. So, I know that, Ms. Manager, we already had a very brief conversation, and I'm very appreciative of looking at the pieces that might allow us to protect people over things. And with that, I'll conclude.
Thank you, Commissioner Buck. So, I will reiterate that none of us want to do any of this, nor was it something that naturally occurred through the economy. But, it is upon us regardless. There's nothing here that, nothing we talked about today makes the city of Gainesville better for the people who live here. Nothing I've ever voted on in a previous budget was frivolous. The things that we do affect people, actual humans in our city. People who work for us, the 2,400 people or so who get a paycheck from the city of Gainesville, the 200,000-plus people who interact with our community on a daily basis. The things we spend money on through these budgets are things that impact lives. They're not just lines on a spreadsheet, any of them. I want everybody to, that's sitting here or watching at home, to know that we're not approaching any of this lightly. We want to do what we can to be as efficient as possible with the cuts that have to come, and to negatively affect lives in our community as little as possible. We will find some things through this process that, that are silver linings, that there will be ways that we have to creatively approach things that end up being positive in the long run. But, they all cause pain in, in the short term. I would encourage folks to go back and review the Joint Legislative Audit Committee, when they, some folks said that they wanted to see the city of Gainesville experience some pain. That's a quote. And I want to assure them that we are experiencing pain through this. I'm sure that ruffles some folks right now, but I'm just quoting what was told to us. We are going to have more conversations, and we're going to learn a lot. Our entire community's going to learn a lot about how the budget works. So, I guess that's a silver lining of its own. We're going to be, I promise you that we are all going to be extra creative in how we find ways to make this work, in how we save jobs, and how we deliver services with less money. We will do our very best to, to keep any, any tax increases to as low a figure as possible and still deliver services. But, that was also a suggestion from the Joint Legislative Audit Committee members, was that we raise taxes. I thank you all for your attention through this today. It's a long three and a half hours, and I appreciate everyone's attention. It is not easy for anybody up here, anybody out there, and I know that. I want to thank again our staff for the, the long hours that they have worked to bring this forward this far, and ask for your patience and your perseverance from everyone as we move this through. We'll be here doing this till the middle of September, toward the end of September, and it's going to be a long several months, but we are here to, to serve you, and, and we, we need to hear from you as well. If you're at home and you're watching this, don't be afraid to reach out. We will do our best to get to, to engage with you as we move through this. And I want to thank you all. So, I don't see any light, so let's move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, our next item is member comment.
Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, my comment is more, I know that we receive one of the community groups that we assist with funding through ARPA and other means. That's great. And I know that coming next week, we will have our quarterly ARPA update. However, some, some slight issues with one of the things we fund were brought to my attention. And so, I wanted to ask formally that the manager, when we look at the budget to actuals for some of those ARPA ones, that when we look at language access and Ginny overall, that we look at how much has actually been expended. And I think part of that was contracting language access program, a contract for the whole city as a whole. I really would like, if possible, between now and then, those numbers break down of how many times has it been used, how many departments have been fully trained up on it, how, how many languages have been utilized, how many, you know, the most frequent departments, that kind of data, so we could see what we have up to date. Because I think the funding for that was approved about a year ago now. So, just to see what numbers we have, if it's available between now and then. I don't know if it's under your shop or Zariah's.
It is, it is under the Charter for Equity and Inclusion, Mr. Fullston. And so, I will provide the information that you've just requested to, to him.
Is the contract under your office? But, it's, contract is fully under theirs.
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure of the division, because it covered all the other. But, whoever is ultimately charged, at that point when we do the ARPA update, I really would like to see those numbers. I had some rather disturbing reports that when folks called up in a different series of languages, that they were just frankly told, no. That they would ask in another language, Spanish, Portuguese, any other language, and just be told, no. That they would try in English to say translator, and they're like, yeah, we don't have that. And I tried myself this morning, and how I was treated. No one should be treated.
I did some secret shopping.
Yeah, I did some secret shopping. And the nasally nose really helped out, but so did the Spanish. But, if I had seen any of our neighbors be responded to that way, to ask about how to get into one of our parks program, to ask about literally, you know, when does trash pickup come by, how do I get a bus pass, how do I get a parking permit? I called a whole host of departments that we talked about here today. And it made me realize 10% of our city can't access our departments, even though we are allocating money so that they can. So, I, I think that is, it warrants a little more in-depth data and conversation when we have that meeting on, on Thursday. And if the director is watching or hearing, I hope that, that he can produce those numbers, especially as we look at what, what we need to do.
It is an ARPA-funded program, and we will have an ARPA update at the next meeting. And I'll make sure that Mr. Fullston is here to talk specifically about how the program is working or not.
Thank you, Mr. Fullston. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Thank you. Commissioner Beckenbauer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It is my understanding that our colleagues across the street at the county recently had a meeting where they were discussing tourist development tax reserves, and that they will soon be putting out an RFP. We potentially have a couple of transformational projects that might qualify for that funding, so I just wanted to put it out there and ask the city manager if there were any plans, if you were not aware, or if you didn't have any plans. I would certainly be interested in us applying for some of those RFP funds, because between the Cultural Arts Center and the Athen Waldo project, I think we have the opportunity to get some capital funding in that way.
I did see the information provided. I actually shared the information with each of you, based on a report that was provided to me from Mr. Harrington relative to the discussion at the County Commission on yesterday. Because we're still in the formative stages of the Cultural Arts Center, as well as Athen Waldo, and not ready yet with a budget, if you will, to move on a construction front, it may be premature for us to apply for those funds, depending on what the funding is for. I don't know yet. But, I will certainly ask Mr. Mann, who is responsible for our Captain Improvements Program, to inquire about what the funds can be used for. And if, in fact, we are at a point in either of those feasibility studies where we can utilize those funds, then we will definitely make application.
Thank you so very much, Madam Manager. I think there may be some opportunity there. Thanks.
Commissioner Beckenbauer.
Commissioner Eastman. Yes, thank you. And leaping off of Commissioner Sacco's point, I, I do think at some point, as we're talking about the various departments and where things would go, it might be time to start thinking about, there's a number of things that are under the Office of Equity and Inclusion that are, that would potentially, as I think Zariah mentioned before when he was talking, are sort of indirect, like as they're doing HR compliance reviews, they have to do it sort of in an indirect way, where they have to interact with HR. Same with the language access, which, you know, they have to interact with general government. It may be worth having a conversation in the future as to what positions are under Office of Equity and Inclusion, or what might make more sense in order to put directly into the offices where these things would be overseeing and where they're working, and just have a workshop to kind of discuss, you know, what the future of the Office of Equity and Inclusion looks like, what makes sense to have in general government, what might make sense to have in the Auditor's Office, and what might make sense to have with OEI. Just, just, just to bring it up. All right, that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Eastman. All right, seeing you for the lights. Thank you all very much for your attention. And if I don't see you in the next few days, have a great Memorial Day, and we will be back at it next week.